Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year.
So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year.
So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week.
But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year.
So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year.
So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year.
So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week.
But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year.
So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week.
But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year. So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Thank you so much for being here with us. I know it's a Friday and you're all ready for the weekend in preparation for the holidays and for Christmas this coming week. But both as city manager and I felt it was very important that we had this mayor and council retreat to talk about 2020 and also start talking about priorities for next year.
So with that, I will call this council to session. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
really taking the COVID responses that we're getting a lot of, particularly Station 10 over on Ajo and Station 8, which is over on North Oracle. And so the idea is to keep those going through the end of March. We think we have enough money in the original allocation of about $1 million, but I'd like to have that in our hip pocket in case we need it to carry us through March. My expectation is that we'll have an ongoing conversation depending on how long the cases continue down the path that they're going. Also, $400,000 for what I'll call Wi-Fi infrastructure. There are some pieces of that that need to be shored up. We had anticipated a certain type of poll to be used on this and when we got down to it, we're recommending a different one. So I'll need some money out of that pot for that. Lastly, about between 800 and 900,000, whatever is left, if you will, for testing shore up. Now, the thought there is, at the current rate, we should have enough through the end of the calendar year. Key word in that is "should." What I don't want to have happen, though, is as we go down the path, next week, we're out of money, if you will, and then I have to do something different to scramble. What I'm asking is for you to allocate up to 900,000, whatever's left of the 1.5 million. The idea is I will report back to you on January 5th with how that's going, both the dollars as well as what's left of the original allocations as well as any of these additional dollars. So that's my recommendation, Mayor, and what that will do is allocate the remainder of the 1.5 million, the rest of the CARES money that was allocated to the city of Tucson.
Mr. Manager, I absolutely agree with your recommendations and making sure that whatever is left that we put in forward for testing. We all have seen pictures of the pop-up testing, sometimes 600, 800, 1,000 people waiting for these pop-up tests that Mayor and Council approved that we do about a month ago. I really appreciate Mayor and Council's interest in making sure that our community, if anyone wants a test, that we provide a test. We were seeing a backlog on the more permanent locations that Pima County has established. And so it's been unbelievable. I was flabbergasted when I received pictures of a Sunday pop-up test and the lines, the amount of families that are there. So it's a pent-up demand and I think that whatever is left, we need to put towards. I also forgot to mention to you all that the past two weeks, the medical communities have been sending letters to Governor Ducey to act on something because of the urgency of the numbers that we're seeing and the lack of hospital space, both in ICU and emergency departments. Just today, you know, I've added my name as mayor and the representative of the city of Tucson to a couple of letters with other mayors and healthcare providers and hospital CEOs. But the latest letter sent just today, just yesterday, is signed by health, public health associations, including Will Humble from Arizona Public Health, Anne Marie Alamedine, president and CEO of Arizona Hospital and Healthcare Association, Leanne Kelly, Maricopa County Medical Society, Libby McDannell, chief executive officer of Arizona Medical Association, as well as Josephine Semedo, executive director of the Arizona Osteopathic Medical Association, and Maria Elena Murphy, board president of the Arizona Organization of Nurse Leaders. They're asking the governor to act on a few things, and let me read those out to you because of the percentage positivity throughout the state and because Arizona finds itself, and I'm quoting the letter, "Arizona finds itself in a potentially catastrophic situation. The healthcare system is overwhelmed and on the brink of considering the need to implement crisis standards of care. We also face the reality that we will likely run out of available staff to care for patients who need our help." They are asking Governor Ducey that he close bars and nightclubs, limiting restaurant operations to outside dining and takeout. Except for essential services, limit public gatherings to no more than 25 people and implement a statewide and enforceable face covering mandate that focuses on business compliance rather than individual compliance. Again, like I said, just today, we see 1,400 new cases in Pima County. And so it is imperative that we continue asking the governor, even though he has said he will not implement any new mandatory mitigation strategies. It is very concerning. And we need to make sure that we're communicating effectively with our community about what a different holiday season we will have and that we ask families especially to stay within their immediate family, which they live with, and continue using a face covering, continue staying at home as much as possible physically distancing if they do have to go out, and just take care of each other and continue pushing on Governor Ducey to not only continue add new mitigation strategies, but also use some of those CARES funds to help small businesses in Arizona and help families in Arizona because we are not out of the woods yet, even though we've started receiving the vaccines. Wanted to see if anyone wanted to add on the recommendations by Mr. Ortega.
Mayor, I see that, Mike, your total is only 14.5. What are you going to do with the other 50,000? Are you going to hold on to that?
Mayor, so my intent was, and I'm sorry if I didn't make it clear, whatever's left, and I said approximately 900,000, whatever is left would go towards the testing, you know, kitty, if you will. Keep in mind that, you know, two parts of that are fluid. Number one, the rescue trucks is fluid and the testing is fluid depending on the amount that we've, that we're burning up on a daily basis. My expectation is that I can bring you back of a more formal proposal into the January timeframe, once I know for sure. But what I wanted to do is make sure that we don't put ourselves in a corner where the testing stops because we're out of money. I want to make sure that I've got at least someplace I can get. So that 900, 950 that's remaining out of the 1.5 million will go towards the testing. That's my intent.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I'll move the motion to have Mr. Ortega have the resources he needs with the Pima Council on Aging, the rescue trucks, the infrastructure, what was it, the Wi-Fi infrastructure and testing, shore up the testing that we need. That's my motion.
I'll second.
So there is a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mayor, it's Nikki. Not sure if you can see my hand.
Councilwoman, I'm so sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to see if we could get some clarification from the city manager or Barbara, just with some questions on the availability of funding for businesses that's still there. We had a conversation this week with some concern of some folks, some businesses trying to apply for funding and they believed that there was no funding left or the applications were closed. So I was hoping we could get some clarity on, you know, timelines, what's that process like for those folks? Because they're still being impacted to a big extent.
Sure. Mayor, I'm going to ask, I know that both John Urino, who's been dealing with this, and Joyce Garland are on. I'm going to ask Joyce to start us off there. As I reported last time, the, there were a lot of folks that were already on the list and the partner agencies continued to process those applications. But I think that there was some confusion between the rent and utility assistance and the businesses. So Joyce, if you don't mind giving us a little bit of background on, I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. I just wanted to just follow up with what you said because that's really what's going on, is there were already lists available. So there may not have been additional applications. The need was so great, they wanted to make sure that they took care of those businesses that actually applied previously. I know John Urino, if he's on, he could give a lot more detail on that.
I'd be happy to, Joyce, and good morning, Mayor and members of the city council. So we need to clarify a couple of points. The first is there is the Workers and Families Program being administered by the Women's Foundation. And I believe Councilmember Lee's question, though, went to the Small Business Continuity Grants being administered by the YWCA. For the Workers and Family Grants, Women's Foundation had over 11,000 applications. And when the additional funding was allocated by Mayor and Council, they, their judgment was they should continue to process the overwhelming number of applications they already had in hand. With respect to the Small Business Continuity Grants and also the Small Business Rent and Utility Grants, the YWCA has continued to accept applications from small businesses. And pursuant to the Mayor and Council's direction after the last meeting, they have prioritized businesses, small businesses again, that have been impacted by the curfew that was put into place in December. So there is still money flowing from the YWCA to small businesses. They have a sizable number of applications on hand. They are continuing to accept applications. There will be a cutoff date, and I'm certain that anyone who contacts them will be told this. They've done, all the agencies have done a great job. They've done an exceptional job on this project. But to recap, there's still money available for small businesses. They continue to process applications on hand. They continue to accept applications. Just because they have to have all the money deployed by December 30th, they will necessarily have to establish a cutoff date at some point in time. But I hope that answers your question, Councilmember Lee, and I'd be happy to provide any additional detail you might want.
That absolutely answers my question. I appreciate the clarification because I think there may have been people applying in the wrong place. So I really appreciate that. And I believe that the applications are open until December 22nd. Anything we can do to help communicate that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, that's a date I'd heard from the YWCA as well. And I will circle back with them and see if there's any additional assistance we can get.
Okay, so who's going to get the word out to these small businesses with the curfew? Because the motion read was differently, to assist the small businesses, grants of 2 million to 3 million and that funds from these grants would also be used to help businesses that would be affected by the city curfew. How would staff implementing this and ensuring the businesses affected by the city curfew are applying for it and getting the funding?
Councilmember Pimbers, the YWCA has added to their website information, information on the curfew piece that you just read out. And I want to back up and say that from the very beginning of the Small Business Continuity Grant Program and really all of the grant programs, any COVID-related impact, including the shutdown we experienced earlier in the year and the curfew recently enacted, all of those have always been items that small businesses or workers and families or others who are eligible to apply for aid could apply based on that. So as far as getting the word out, the YWCA is using its channels to get the word out and I'm available to help in any way to get the word out, although I must say we have relied on the partner agencies through their channels of communication because they are administering the grant funds to get the word out to interested applicants. I had corresponded by email, of course, with Michael Gaiman the day before yesterday on several points related to the Small Business Continuity Loan. Michael, as you no doubt know, is in some executive level with the Metropolitan Chamber. He was getting the word out to businesses on that. And as I say, I stand ready to help in any way I can.
What assurances do we have that the YWCA is getting the information out? Because we've been told that people have called and they said there's no more money and there's no new process.
And this is. Councilmember Pimbers, I will follow up again with Magdalena Verdugo, the executive director of the YWCA. You know, in these times, and I don't mean any disrespect to any constituent who may feel they've gotten incorrect information. And these times, there's a lot of misinformation out there. I can tell you that Magdalena and her team are not telling people there's no money left. So I can't speak to where people are getting information, but I'm in daily contact with the YWCA folks and they know what they need to do. They know how to do it. And if you want to send anybody my way so that I can straighten it up, I'm here, ready to deal with that. And if you, if anyone has any suggestions on additional channels that we should ask the YWCA to pursue or that you would like me to pursue, I'd be happy to do that, of course.
Mayor, also wanted to mention that we do promote this information on our Economic Initiative's weekly updates. So the information that's sent out to the business community through Barbara Coffey and her team includes this information. So we're trying to get it out. I think it's, it's just, I think there's an expectation that's out there and hopefully we can just educate folks on what the realities are. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Ortega, and thank you, John. Really appreciate it. Councilmember Kuzatchek.
Yeah, John, or maybe Mike, reality check, based on the backlog that they have, is it your sense that they've got more applicants already than they're going to be able to take care of?
Councilmember Mayor, Councilmember Kuzatchek, my sense is that we've got a lot more need out there and I think that's one of the things that we are continually pushing our federal partners to understand that we put a lot of money out there, but it's just not enough. And that's just not, not only in the business side, but also on the workers and families and the arts, the arts and culture, et cetera. So I would almost assure you that we'll have way more applications and need than we will have money for.
And if I may add, the YWCA's website is very, very clear. You land on their site and it immediately says Small Business Continuity Grants and it has, it's also managing the Rionuevo Continuity Grants as well as the Rent and Utility Assistance. They define it really well. I've used my social media sites to promote it. I also have communication with the YWCA. And they do encourage council members to, you know, make sure that our small businesses in Ward 2, Ward 4, Ward 3 throughout the city of Tucson are aware and knowledgeable and is as simple as giving the website to the small businesses so that they can go in and apply. So they've been very, very helpful. I agree with John that they are moving everything they possibly can to move these funds out and update their website very regularly. Unfortunately, I agree with you, Mr. Ortega, there's so much more need than funds available. There is still funds for small businesses. We should help our businesses throughout the city of Tucson apply and direct them to the YWCA and they will let the community, Mayor and Council, and our staff know when they've reached capacity. What I also know and I wanted to share is that Congress, both Senate and House, are working on a potential relief package. We've been in communication with Andrew Greenhill and Tracy Tucker, our federal lobbyists. Unfortunately, the Senate removed direct funds to cities and states. Unfortunately, the Senate removed direct funds to cities and states. And they are, it looks like they are getting ready to approve a package, a $900 billion package, maybe this weekend, maybe Monday of next week. But direct assistance to cities and states has been removed from the package. So the city of Tucson will not receive any relief funds to help our community. That's what I know as of yesterday. And I'm just hoping, that's fine. I'm just hoping that they move on something immediately, so that they can provide additional support for testing, and small businesses, and arts and culture, and workers and families. Anything right now is important, as well as extending the housing moratorium that they had put in order. So that's what we know with what's happening with the federal relief package that's being talked about in Congress. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of things. I'd like to see some flexibility on the 50-employee, on the 50-employee limit. I think that we need to be sure that it's the equivalent to 50 full-time employees. We've got some businesses, Roadhouse Cinemas, right now, and again, with Tentacle Peak, those are the two that are in my ward, that have over 100 employees, but a lot of people are 20 hours, contractors, the gaslight too. And again, they're not, no, they're not, there aren't million-dollar corporate salaries in those businesses. Those businesses are homegrown, Tucson-grown businesses, that are institutions here. And so I'd like to see some flexibility in that, with that piece. The second thing I wanted to mention, that as we talk about the Second CARES Act, I wanted to get some clarification. I know that there's three versions of that bill. One has the $600 stimulus added to the $907 billion package that was kind of being negotiated. That's the $1.4 trillion one. I think that's the one that's gaining the most legs. And that one does not have provisions for cities and counties. I thought it did.
The last, the latest word that we received was that it's a $900 billion package. The direct assistance for for cities and states was removed. And it does include an additional round of PPP, forgivable loans to small businesses. And so it will, it will have that additional funds for testing, and direct assistance to families. And it also includes an additional $300 per week for unemployment benefits, and an extension of the moratorium.
But the cities and counties got left out, basically.
Yes.
So that's where they got, they went back, they went up to 1.4, and then went back to 900.
900.
That's gonna hurt, that's gonna sting a little bit. It's kind of interesting, because on that testing money, you know, we've done a pretty good job with that testing money. And that'll end up, probably, probably, I don't understand how they're going to be able to put that into testing. So maybe we'll, we'll take another crack at it, and see if we can make our calls. And I think we should all work our phones and collaborate with our colleagues in other cities who are doing the same job we have, and let them know that it's imperative that we don't get left out.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Ortega?
I just wanted to make a point of clarification. Certainly, Vice Mayor's comments are well taken, and we'll express that as a sensitivity to our partners that are processing those applications. It's pretty tough to change criteria like this second. We've got about a week and a half to go, and that's not gonna, it's gonna be difficult. However, keep in mind that it's 50 FTEs, which basically gives opportunity for them to cobble together the part-timers, if you will. And so that's, that's an opportunity. So we're, we're trying to be as flexible as we can, as you know. It's just gotta go online somewhere, but we'll certainly keep going down that path. That's on there. Thank you.
Any additional comments? All righty, with that, let's go with a curfew language and enforcement with Mr. Rankin.
Mayor, we had a motion in a second on the floor.
That's true. You're right. You are right. Sorry about that. So there's a motion in a second for the continued investment of CARES funds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Question about Paul's, about Paul's comment, though. Paul, were you wanting to make that the equivalent of 50 FTE?
Mr. Manager, is it 50 FTEs, or is it just 50 employees?
John and Barb, but I believe it's already like that. It's already FTEs.
I mean, do we need a motion for that? Or can we, can we at least have, in the crux of this discussion, and part of the previous motion, I think that can be done, where we just add the flexibility. I think I
Vice Mayor, I think it's two conversations. We have a motion on the floor that is for the financial, the continued allocation of CARES funds. So let's do that. And then I believe that there's the possibility of working with the YWCA, like the manager said, it's, you know, in next week, week and a half, we have to make sure that we put that, those funds out. So I'm pretty sure that there could be some flexibility with the Y. I don't see a reason why we have to make a motion, or anything like that. We just could easily make sure that we put the YWCA in contact with the businesses that you're concerned about. But there's a motion in a second, and let's, let's vote on this. It's the allocation of the funds. And then if you'd like to add any, any additional comments. Okay. All righty, so there, so all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Ortega and Vice Mayor?
Your Honor, I actually want to defer to Mike Rankin to see if we need a motion. I thought we, he could probably chime in here. Mike, do we need to make a motion about the flexibility piece for the YWCA, YWCA and the new business grants? Or can that be done administratively?
So Vice Mayor, Mayor, members of the Council, first, I wanted to confirm what the current criteria are. It looks like by using, looking at the, the website announcement, that it's just defined in terms of number of employees, 50 employees. So it doesn't look, at least in my immediate look, that it, so in other words, part-times would count towards the 50, as opposed to measuring it from 50 FTE. If you, yes, 50 employees. So if it is the Mayor and Council's desire that that be expanded such that it's really referencing 50 FTEs instead of just 50 total employees, I think a motion would be appropriate for that. Recognizing, however, what's already been explained, which is that there's a lot of applications already in the queue. So I don't know how much of an impact this will have in the, in the next 14 days.
Well, and I appreciate the, the input about that. But the bottom line is, is that we've got these niche businesses, specifically, or we have a knit, like, here's, here's a good example. The way I, I mean, I'm not involved specifically in the corporate operations of any of these places, but you have a situation where you've got folks operating basically as independent contractors without an EIN number, right? So now, they're really a single business, and they could apply as one person. And so those are kind of the
Vice Mayor, let me, let me, let me tell you what concerns me about this, is that for, since we started the Small Business Grant Program, we've defined from the very beginning what the qualifications to apply for that grant are. And it concerns me that we're going to put ourselves in a very difficult and precarious situation if with two weeks to go, we change the definition of who can apply.
And that's, Your Honor, that's what I'm trying to avoid. I don't want to make, I want, I want to say
Because then
What I want to do is just say, I want to grant them flexibility to make some judgment calls if it's within the spirit of what we're trying to do. That's where I'm going.
And I think that's
Do something like that?
I think that's what we've, I think that's what we've, being so intimate with the language that we put together in the contract with the YWCA, I think we allow the YWCA to look at the need of the business, and if they're local, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We, we laid it out really well, so that the YWCA could practice solid judgment of the need of the community, especially if they're locally owned businesses. So I would say that, that you connect the small business to the YWCA, either Francisca Villegas, or Magdalena Verdugo, and they could absolutely help them through the process of applying for the grant.
And Mayor, I would just add that in the absence of a motion, that message can be reinforced with our partner agency, in the same manner that you just described.
That's all I'm asking. That's what I'm looking for. I think that's way cleaner.
Absolutely. Okay. All righty, go ahead, Mr. Rankin.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Council. You're all very aware that the Pima County Board of Supervisors acted on Tuesday to convert their voluntary curfew to a mandatory curfew. The county's order, as approved by the Board of Supervisors, applies countywide, which means it applies both within the city limits, and outside the city limits in unincorporated Pima County. Since the Mayor and Council had already acted, going back to December 1st, with your own ordinance, with the related proclamation by Mayor Romero, the, some questions have come in about, well, which controls over the other, and is there conflict, et cetera. I can tell you that both orders peacefully coexist, that the Pima County curfew order does not change the responsibilities of individual persons within the city limits, that were already put in place by the Mayor and Council, and through the Mayor's proclamation. The county curfew does, in fact, reinforce the requirements that the Mayor and Council approved on December 1st, which essentially are that all persons are prohibited from traveling, or being present on any public street or public place during the defined curfew hours, unless they are engaged in essential functions and essential activities. And those functions and activities are defined the same way in the county order, as in the city order. And in fact, they're defined in the same way as they're defined statewide, under the governor's prior executive orders. The curfew hours themselves in the two orders are the same, 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM. So those are consistent. The county curfew went into effect December 15th, and it continues to run until the metric that measures significant community spread changes. So in other words, the metric that defines significant community spread is anything above 100 confirmed cases per 100,000 of population. And that's what the county included in their resolution. They say that the curfew order is going to stay in place till the the spread number drops below that metric. In our instance, we had put an end date of December 23rd, for the termination of the curfew. I know the question has come in as to, well, what is the current number? The measuring community spread under that metric? I personally don't know. I know that at the end of November, that rate was at over, was 343 per 100,000 population, and I don't believe it's come down. So I think you can expect that the county order, the way it's written, will remain in place for some significant period of time, especially with the holidays coming up, and people gathering, et cetera, based on what we saw over the Thanksgiving break as well. The county curfew does impose new obligations on business establishments themselves. And that's because the county has authority through its health department, and under the statutes that define the powers of county health departments, with respect to the operating permits that counties issue, food permits, et cetera. So restaurants and bars are subject to those operating permits issued by Pima County. So within its curfew order, Pima County included a provision that establishments that allow persons to violate the curfew order are subject to the suspension or revocation of the operating permits issued by the Pima County Health Department. So that is an additional element that goes beyond what the Mayor and Council ordinance provided. That provision is enforced by the county, through the county health department itself. The county resolution and curfew order also provided a general provision that the county can enforce the curfew requirements through any other available legal action. What that means is the county can enforce it through its health code, through civil citation, both for businesses, or for individual persons who violate the curfew. So there is no conflict between the city ordinance and the county order. The significant difference is the end date, which, you know, we acted to establish as December 23rd. The net effect is, in my opinion, there's sort of two options. The Mayor and Council could just choose to allow the city's curfew order to expire, as provided in the ordinance and in the proclamation on December 23rd. In that instance, the county order will stay in place until such time as that significant community spread number comes, comes below the 100 per 100,000. Alternatively, you could extend the city order, because it wouldn't conflict with the county order. And you could extend it to the same, using the same metric as is included in the county resolution. That's what I see as the, the two options. And you could give that direction here today.
Any discussion or thoughts on this particular item? So just to understand and make it clear, Rankin, we could, we could change our ordinance to reflect that of the county in terms of their guidelines as to when the curfew's over. Or we could terminate ours, and then just follow the county curfew.
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. What is the Council's reaction?
I think as long as they're fairly redundant, there's no sense in having to simultaneously just let the counties pick up where ours leaves off. That's be my sense. They've got a fairly, fairly robust metric in terms of the number per 100,000, and it's way over that 300 and something.
It's very robust and makes sense. I actually think it makes more sense in terms of adding a date, adding a metric to it, as to the health of the community. I am, I'm open to either, either way. Vice Mayor?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to, I'd like to move that we amend our original motion to be congr, I think, well, in our motion, weren't we going to be congruent with the county? I mean, I thought we said we were. Does, do we actually have to make a change by motion?
Vice Mayor, it's a great question, because there was additional direction when the Mayor and Council approved the ordinance. And in that additional direction had to do with the hours of the curfew, less so than the end date of the curfew. Because there was discussion, you may remember, about what time the curfew would start. And ultimately, you settled at 10:00 PM. But the direction was that if the county established an earlier time, or a different window for the curfew, that we would, we would make ours consistent with theirs. So ultimately, the hours are the same. It's just that their end date goes out until that, that metric is met.
I would suggest, Vice Mayor, that I do like the idea of letting I would suggest, Vice Mayor, that I do like the idea of letting, letting ours expire because Pima County's is much more comprehensive.
Right.
And, and so they, I would, I would be fine with letting ours expire and then just following Pima County's order. There's, is, is so much.
I think that's the cleanest way to do it. I mean, I mean, it's not, we're splitting hairs here. Everybody knows what the.
I agree.
And people need to stay home, you know?
I agree. The only question I do have, Mr. Rankin, is the enforcement piece. If we let ours expire, how does enforcement work?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm glad you brought that up because I was going to jump in that the only real change I would see if we let ours expire while theirs continues is that, so our curfew order was focused more on the individuals and, and their compliance with curfew. And as you recall, it was built into the proclamation that enforcement through TPD was to focus on education, providing notice and an opportunity to comply. And I think you've all seen the report from Chief Magnus that his officers have been doing that. They actually went to a system of doing a formal documentation of any time they gave a notice or warning. And they have issued just 50 warnings, 15 official, formal documented warnings, and have not had to issue a citation because they've been able to gain compliance by giving those notices and warnings. Yet once our order would expire, then the enforcement of the county order is through the county. And the county's order really applies more or focuses more in any event on the business establishments rather than the individuals. And so enforcement will be through, through the county rather than through Tucson police officers.
Councilmember Jimbres?
Yes, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, I didn't know if you had a question. I, I just heard you in the.
I was just going to say I agree, but the enforcement is still a little tricky. So you're saying that the sheriff's department will have to report, provide enforcement? Or is this the city still working with them because of the ordinance that's been placed?
It will be upon the expiration of the city's order on December 23rd, the continuing enforcement of the county's curfew order will be through the Pima County Health Department.
Okay, I see. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Because it is much more focused on businesses complying.
Yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Lee?
Thanks, Mayor, and I apologize if you already said this, but I agree with what everyone's saying. It's cleaner, it's simple to just let ours expire. Do we need to do anything? Do we need to make a motion to allow that to happen, or does it just expire and off into the sunset it goes? Is there any action we need to take to have it expire and just move on?
Councilwoman Lee, in the absence of any action, it'll expire. So I just wanted everybody to understand that and make a conscious decision if that's what you want to have happen.
I know with the enforcement end as well, anyone can, you know, anyone can, can contact the Pima County Health Department to let them know if there's blatant disregard of the curfew in any business. So I know that TPD also has been helpful in terms of getting people, you know, home. And I think that that needs to continue just to make sure that we're helping each other, right? The city is helping the county. But yeah, any, any enforcement that has to be followed up on, Mr. Huckleberry said that anyone, there's a portal on Pima County website that, that people can, can help with enforcement. If they see any blatant disregard, they can, they can report to Pima County.
That's right, Mayor, and even if our order expires, officers can still educate folks that they have contact with, that they need to, you know, what the county curfew requirements are and that they need to comply. And certainly, we can share information with the county health department if our officers or others observe places that are acting with willful non-compliance.
Yeah, I think that, that Mr. Huckleberry did ask for help, you know, from the city of Tucson in terms of just encouraging people, educational, to get people home, et cetera. So I, I believe that even if we let ours expire, that that educational component for individuals to, to comply with the curfew would be, would be helpful as well.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I agree. We need to continue to, to get the message out, social distancing, masking and, and meeting the curfew regulations is important. And I think we need to get that, continue to have that message out. And I know that Lane and, and Mr. Ortega have done a good job, and so has Andrew Squire and Andy Greenhill getting that message out with our staff.
And TPD, TPD has done a wonderful job with, you know, letting people know and, and giving them warnings and education. And I, I think that's very valuable as well. But I do think that it's cleaner, as Councilwoman Lee said, just to let ours expire and help where we can with Pima County.
Mayor, I know that you've had conversations with Pima County as well. They have asked for help, and so it will be another tool in the toolbox for our officers. And the chief understands that, again, it's another tool, but the focus and intent from the mayor and council is education first and compliance, quite frankly. And so that, that's the direction that they'll have going forward. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega. Alrighty, any other questions or comments? Already hearing none. Anything else, Mr. Ortega, on this particular item?
No, Mayor, we had scheduled it for 10 minutes, and it actually took us an hour and 10 minutes, so.
Let's move then.
We're going to move, absolutely.
Let's make sure we move. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Rankin, and thank you all. Then I think both Mr. Ortega and Mr. Rankin have clear direction in terms of the curfew and how to proceed.
Yes, Your Honor.
Alrighty, so let's move on to item two. Item two, staff has an update on the mayor and council priorities identified during the January 28th, 2020 retreat, and also a year-end review. I just wanted to open up this item by, by saying what a year it has been, first and foremost, 2020. Also, that this particular retreat has been a collaboration between the city manager's office and myself and my office. We wanted to have a comprehensive conversation with council about kind of a year in review and then a conversation about what we were able to accomplish this year, even though it has been a tumult to us here. Mr. Manager sent out a memo signed by both myself and him, talking about the year-end review, the 2020 budget retreat that we had this January, the priorities that mayor and council set. First and foremost, that we had a very comprehensive questionnaire for mayor and council to fill out and that the priorities identified by mayor and council, for example, climate action, recycling, sustainability, parks and planting trees, housing, affordable housing history, homelessness, investing in children and youth, economic development and training, pushing down the numbers of poverty, families living in poverty in the city of Tucson, crime, community safety and, and public safety, equity, IT, investment in IT and cybersecurity, investing in green transportation, green infrastructure and green mobility and roads. The outcome of that January 2020 retreat was that we, mayor and council, our city manager and staff, focused our budgeting process on those, on those priorities. And we hit the worldwide pandemic of COVID-19 in mid-March. It arrived to Tucson, and our priorities had to change a bit. At that time, we had to make sure that we focused on what, how we would respond to the pandemic. Thanks to quick action by Congress, the federal cares funds came to the city of Tucson, and we were able to organize and coordinate ourselves with a strategic plan on how those funds, those federal cares funds were put into our community. And in the midst of that pandemic and that urgency and emergency that we had to respond to, what I did want to talk about is that we did get a lot of the priorities that we talked about back in January 2020. We did bring them to the forefront in our budgeting process, such as the green stormwater infrastructure. We passed that. We created an urban forestry program manager position. We kicked off the Million Trees Initiative and began tracking data. We allocated funds for social workers and are, we're reimagining how we provide safety to our community with a community safety pilot program. We have also challenged ourselves with solving homelessness and not just managing homelessness. We committed and allocated funds for hiring a Housing First Program Director. We have begun, begin discussions of a chief equity officer and allocated funds for an equity analysis. We allocated funds for a climate action and adaptation plan. You know, we, we did, we've, we did so much on top of the, the pandemic and our reaction and action to help community, invested more than $70 million from federal cares funds back into the hands of small businesses, of nonprofits, of workers and families, of arts and culture and entertainment venues for childcare. So, so much that we accomplished in a year that we have not seen any other, like 2020. So I just wanted to make sure that, one, that I thanked my colleagues on the council for their immense work and, and really doing this together as a mayor and council representing the community, to our city manager and our city attorney and our finance team with Joyce Garland and her team. We really moved fast to be, be responsive to our community. We were very intentional in how we budgeted and how we allocated those cares funds. So today, what both Mr. Ortega and I wanted to make sure that we did was that we kicked off a, our budget planning conversation with an initial focus conversation on long-term transportation planning. It is only the beginning of the conversation for our budget, but there are some things that we wanted to get at today so that we can initiate the planning conversation for our budget. Congress is starting to talk about an infrastructure and transportation bill that they want to have ready by September. And so also, we have an executive summary that was shared with you all and the public on Move Tucson. We should start deliberating on Proposition 101, which is our roads and public safety proposition. And the conversation regarding the Regional Transportation Authority has started. And so what both the city manager and I felt that we could kick off our budget discussions was with this focused conversation on long-term transportation planning. Does not mean that there are not other priorities like community safety, public safety, parks and recreation, housing, community development. All of that is very important as we kick off the conversation for our budget planning. But we only have so much time today, right? And as we've seen, we can, we can get really passionate about one particular issue. So I just wanted to make sure that we, we set up the tone of what we're focusing on in this particular kickoff. We also have on the agenda a conversation about retention of our employees, our, our resources, which is our employees' retention and recruitment of employees for the city of Tucson and pay. And so you should all have received a really nifty graphic which talks about the timeline and really discusses the ongoing discussion and what we're going to be asking of mayor and council is that we, we allocate in our individual calendars very specific time for ongoing discussions on the rest of the budget. So there is a graphic that kind of explains to you, in the week of January 25th, we will have another focused conversation between mayor and council and then so forth and so on during the budget process. We also want to make sure that we're gathering open comments and input from our public to see what their priorities are so that we can adjust and implement that into our budgeting process. With that, I'd like to make sure that we invite the city manager to add to, you know, to this, this opening of, of this conversation because we really have been working hand in hand in, in planning for budgeting discussions as mayor and council and as committee. Mr. Ortega?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the opening. I think you did a great job of really encapsulating the challenges that we had this year. We have this year. We just got done talking about the COVID relief money and so forth. I think the, the, the context, at least in my head, is to how to approach this going forward as, as a few different facets that all kind of come together. So first, Mayor, I think the, the approach, and you, you talked about that graphic, I think you called it the nifty graphic. I happen to, I happen to like those kinds of graphics. I know you do too, Mayor. And it's the one that's at the last, it's the, the last graphic. It's a handwritten, you know, little schedule, if you will. Gives you a thumbnail sketch of the thoughts going forward, also gives you some dates that, that we sat down and carved out. But I think the key piece to that, well, there's two. One is ongoing discussion about this. So I don't think this is a one and done. It can be seen that way. This has to be a partnership, if you will, to develop ultimately what we'll call the budget for 2021. But also in that, in kind of the bottom half outlines the spirit and intent that you all outlined for us as a part of the 21, excuse me, the 20 budget with regard to participation. And so that discussion needs to continue down the path. And I think I just messed up those numbers. So it's the 21 budget that we're in, the 22 budget that we're working on. So again, I think that's, that's a very important part that we'll look for some feedback and guidance. And again, it's not a one and done. You know, we'll, we'll, I know that there'll be ongoing dialogue with your offices and ongoing dialogue with the public during this time. Mayor, I won't, I won't go over the accomplishments. I think you did a great job. Suffice it to say that we had a game plan started January 28th. It turned upside down middle part of March. Then we had, we had our, those in custody desks. Then we had, we had our, those in custody desks that turned us again upside down and, and made us rethink how we do business. Then we got the ninety six million dollars again, you know, turn, turn things around for us. But the key and the underlying piece to that, which I would suggest are twofold. One, the leadership and the ability for you all to stay tight and, and together on where we're headed. But also the nimbleness and flexibility of the, of the staff. I think the, the, the plan was great and the ability to move from one direction to the other, if you will, based on the challenges that we faced is, is really something for an organization of our size. It really is a thing of beauty to, to see and observe. So with regard specifically to the transportation piece, and we do have some information to share with you. I don't know that we need to get into it in the level of detail that was provided to you, but I'll give you some ideas and some thoughts on, on how this works. So clearly, transportation's probably one of the number one issues that we face. It's one of the things that I hear from almost all of you on a regular basis when we do our briefings. We hear from the public on a regular basis in terms of potholes and, you know, just, just picket. And it's not just pavement, but it's mobility as a whole, you know, transit services. We had a conversation about fares. We have all of these pieces out there on how we move people. So as you know, we went down the Move Tucson effort. I know that in your materials, you have a, a PowerPoint presentation which you've seen, I believe, prior that outlines the, the buckets, if you will, the pieces that we heard from the public as we went down that path. The reason that this conversation is so important and timely is, Mayor, you mentioned, I know that the federal government is talking about reauthorization of a transportation bill. They will be looking hard at the infrastructure around transportation and mobility, which is not just roads. They're going to be looking at transit, mobility on that end. They'll also be looking at broadband and a variety of the other pieces that go along with that. So as we're talking about transportation and priorities around that, it will be important to encapsulate those, those other pieces as well and not get just so focused on the, on the roads. However, roads are important, as we know, and that's what people still drive on and, and so forth. There's two other pieces that I think are important as we're going down this, this path and, and having a conversation. One of them is RTA Next. We spent a fair amount of time talking with you all about that and what that can look like going forward. So keep that in mind. Keep that in the back of your head as we're, we're going down this path. What is it that would resonate with the region with regard to transportation and mobility? And then not subordinate necessarily, but an important part of the, the discussion is local sales tax, local funding sources, i.e. Prop one oh one. Prop one oh one is scheduled to expire in June of twenty two. That's a conversation with the community. That's a conversation and how all that works together. Federal funding, the RTA conversation, and then, of course, the Prop one oh one expiring. Just to give you magnitude, and I know it's in your materials, I believe, when you look at seventy seven percent of our roads that are in failing condition, that's a very significant portion, you know, basically three quarters of our roads are in failing condition. And with, without getting into all of the detail on that, you know what that means. Basically, it's a continuous barrage of potholes. It's a continuous barrage of failing pavement. And the resources that are necessary for that are dramatic and, and significant. And I don't think this is just a local problem, if you will. This is a national problem and certainly a state problem. So again, as, as you start, you know, deliberating and, and talking about these priorities and these conversations, the magnitude of this is really what we need to kind of, kind of keep up here as far as how do we address that and what's the conversation, both with our electives at the state and federal levels, but also with the population, with the residents of our community, to give them the confidence. And I think we've done that with Prop four oh nine and Prop one oh one. Give them the confidence that, you know, there is a peace here for the local resident to weigh in on and help with, if you will, if they want the infrastructure that, that we can all be proud of. So Mayor, I didn't mean to be so long-winded. I wanted to just kind of give you that, that overview. Happy to get into as much detail as you want. I know Diana's on cue. If you'd like her to go over any pieces of the.
Oh, Mr. Manager, this is what I'd like to do because we have an item four, which is the initial focus goal item. I think that this moment, this particular item two in our agenda is to hear from our colleagues on the council in terms of priorities, what they think about the priorities that we had talked about as a mayor and council and as individual representatives of our, of our city. What they also feel about the work plan, which is the nifty graphic graph that you presented to us. But I, I believe this is, this is a good time to, to have my colleagues speak a bit about their priorities. What, how do they compare to what they told us in January? And what they would like to make sure that we work on for twenty one, twenty two fiscal year, if that's, if that's good. Alrighty, so I'd like to open it up for my colleagues on the council to add their, their thoughts and input. Councilman, Councilwoman Lee?
I'll just jump right in, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I think it has been such a crazy year, but comparing the priorities that we put together from Ward four, it's very consistent, I see, moving into twenty twenty one. I will say though, that in going through the process of the Smart City Initiative and seeing, I never thought that a pandemic would be a catalyst for that to come forward. But in seeing the value that that is going to add to the city in terms of getting traffic moved through the city more efficiently, the safety aspects of it, allowing us to still have the Tucson feel and not be Phoenix, but get traffic moved around, I think is going to be incredibly valuable. So I think that's going to be even more of a, a higher priority on, on our radar for sure. So that's just some of my initial thoughts, but I, I think we're still tracking kind of where we wanted to, to focus at the beginning of twenty twenty one. So that would be my contribution.
Great. Anyone else? Oh, Councilmember Pimbris.
Yes, and I see that we have many challenges too with the, the IT department and, and cybersecurity. And I think this is going to be the way we're doing meetings in the future because of the pandemic and other issues that are going to be coming. So we've got to make sure we look at that. And I know I also agree with the transportation issues that we need to look at. And I'm glad that the million doll, the Million Trees Initiative has been kicked off and we're removing that. Especially over here at the Tom Price Center that we kicked off. So many with you, Madam Mayor. And economic development and training. And then the other thing we have to look at is our employees. Continue to work on ensuring that we have enough employees to fill the roles that we have. We have lots of people that are retirement eligible, especially in our police and public safety or fire department and then the dispatcher units. We've got to look at that and see how we're going to look at that. And that's the new challenge for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any others? Go ahead, Councilmember Kusacik.
Are, are you holding the discussion of the transportation item to another part of the agenda?
Yes, the, the, we're going to have the opportunity in our item four. Looking forward, initial focus goals, transportation, long-term planning, all that stuff. Right now, I, we were thinking that we would share any priorities based on the year that we just lived and what we see forward in terms of relief and recovery.
Yeah. Well, hopefully we are successful and you're successful in helping to lobby at the federal level to get this CARES two money. Because that has been, that has been our salvation this year. Secondly, though, the continued focus on our core responsibilities, you know, and that's something that we, you know, we don't, we, we haven't skirted. And I was on a call with some people yesterday and they asked what our major achievement was in twenty, in this year. And, you know, COVID notwithstanding, and my answer was to be able to continue to deliver the services that we did according to our charter, even though we, we had this monumental challenge in front of us. So continue that on into twenty one and hopefully the, the feds come clean with another CARES two. And hopefully they see their way to getting some city support rolled into it because that was absolutely essential to us. We'll wait on the transportation piece.
Right, I agree. If we would not have received, I believe it was forty four million dollars for, from the Federal Transit, Transit Administration for support for our transit systems, we would be in a world of hurt. But absolutely, I agree. Core responsibilities and of course, the projects that we have started. You know, continuing to make sure that we're budgeting for our climate action and adaptation plan that we continue in this twenty one, twenty two fiscal year. The continuation of budgeting for our community safety pilot program. Our Equity Office and Equity Officer, we need to think about how we continue the momentum that we started this year and make sure that the budget contains funding for those key initiatives that we kicked off. I would like to make sure that we also think about general fund budgeting for roads and for our streets and roads. I know that we're talking about RTA. I know that we're talking about, you know, about Prop one oh one. But I know that we should also put our money where our mouth is in terms of our roads and investing in our neighborhood roads and neighborhood arterial streets. And so I would like to be able to think about budgeting from our general fund or our unassigned fund for additional allocations to, to ward offices so that we can work some, some funds into our neighborhoods and, and some arterial road funding. So that's some initial, initial thoughts that I have. And I know that Councilmember Santa Cruz has her hand up and Vice Mayor Cunningham.
Thank you, Mayor. I think similarly to everybody else on the council, I think we're still trying to like catch our breath from everything that this year, you know, has kind of thrown at us. So I don't feel like I have like a complete, you know, idea of what some of these, what some of these priorities for this year is going to look like. But I did, like looking over what we talked about at the retreat earlier in the year, that a lot of that, you know, continues to, to hold true. We had to pivot a little bit with the allocation of the CARES dollars. But I think that part of the thinking there was to how do we build the infrastructure for some of the things, you know, that we want to push for in, in the future. So I'm really thankful to have been able to engage in that process. But going off on what you said, yeah, I just want to continue building on the participatory budgeting process. It, you know, it was an educational process and I know we're going to talk about it more later, but that really in other cities where it exists, there's actually dollar amounts that community does get to have a say in the allocations and how that money is used. And that can be citywide or it can be per ward, like how investments need to happen. I think right now what our community is really asking is that they have a little, you know, have a little more involvement in, in things that impact their, their everyday life. So I would like to see there be a more authentic participatory budgeting and it just being some kind of exercise that is just used to like, you know, this is, this is where the community is at this, you know, period of time. So that's one thing I, again, like everybody else has mentioned, the transportation, you know, safety connections. All of that continues to be really important to, to us and, and what we've heard from the community as well. And then just like continuing the community engagement process, like what are the, yeah, what are the systems we have to put in place so that folks in our community are feeling engaged or they have a place to, to voice their, their opinions or their needs? Yeah, we want to just kind of continue doing that work and, and maybe even having a little more creative space to address someone like having those, you know, cultural landmarks, you know, here in our city and giving some attention to those as well. That's what I have in mind.
Thank you, Councilmember Santa Cruz. And after the Vice Mayor shares his, his thoughts, I would like to have Mr. Ortega or Joyce or Jeff Yates to talk to us about the participatory budget. I know that Joyce included a memo in our materials talking about the experiences and the lessons learned of what we did with participation, with community participation this, this past budget season. But let's, let's go to the Vice Mayor and then Joyce, if you want to jump in, or Mr. Ortega, to talk about the, the work plan that was presented. It, it is a handwritten document. I, I really like it because I'm a, I'm a visual learner and I, and I like to have things like an action plan in, in writing. And I really feel this work plan is an action plan for mayor and council in our community. So Mr. Vice Mayor and then Joyce, if you want to jump in and talk to us about what you're thinking in terms of participatory budget. You're on mute, Vice Mayor.
So over the years, you know, we, we, when we have this discussion, it's, it's our opportunity to bring out some of the things that are on our agenda as far as policy shifts, paradigm shifts. The biggest shift we have this year is that at some point in this year, we don't know when it's going to be exactly. It could be as early as March. It could be as late as July. We're going to be coming out of this pandemic, hopefully. I'm, I, I want to say that I'm an optimist and that I think that the vaccine will be effective enough and that the monoclonal antibodies and treatments that have been forthwith will be successful in, in mounting some quasi-return, return to normalcy. And when we have that, I think there's going to be some things that are going to happen organically that we want, we're going to have to address. I think that one of the things that will happen is that I think that early on in, in, in the situation is that there's going to be a subconscious need for people to be out, just out. And we probably need to figure out what, what that'll look like, how to prepare for it, be ready for it. I think there's another thing, and this concerns the youth, and you know that I always like to, to talk about youth. And that is that if the recovery happens early enough, I think that there's going to be some high school seniors, some eighth grade kids, and even some fifth grade kids who are finishing that portion of their school and moving on to the next school, who will want some, in really all grades and all school districts, from what I'm understanding, are probably going to have to have some summer school. They're going to have to have, they're going to want to have some extended programs. We'll probably see, and they're already talking about it in certain areas, is some youth sports and they're going to try to pack, we'll probably end up trying to pack one year of youth sports into a five-week period. And I'm okay with that. And I think that's stuff that if we have the resources available, that we should be helping on. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with fronting a little money as long as it's not something that's going to compromise our budget too much to let our youth make up for some of the lost social interaction time that they didn't get this year because all they did was online school. And the reason that I'm so vehement on that is, one, I'm, I'm a middle school teacher, but I have two, two boys, one sixth grader and one twelfth grader. And I've witnessed firsthand how for middle schoolers and high schoolers, how much of a drag it's been to miss out on a true high school experience. And so if we can find a way to give them some, a portion of it and get that piece back, even over, you know, where, where one weekend we have a, one weekend we have a, I'm busy right now. Where we have one week, we have a, a soccer tournament, one week we have a basketball tournament, et cetera, et cetera. One week we have school performances. The, the orchestras of each school get to play. These are things that those kids didn't get a chance to do, their senior concert, their senior showcase. I mean, that's stuff that, that's stuff that's part of us. And so I'm willing. And so I'm willing to offer part, part of our resources. I don't, again, a lot of it depends on the Second CARES Act, what our budget situation is. I'm not going overboard. I'm not saying we're going to put fifty million, don't worry. But I'm definitely willing to make that investment. So that's the first piece. I want to talk about the COVID recovery part. And then we have to be there for the recovery, the philosophical recovery. The kind of COVID Zen, if you will. The second thing I want to talk about is I've been talking about it for many, many years. And that is both Think and KidCo. Again, this will be, we've basically been delayed. We were ready to do this a while ago. And that is to try to work with school districts to offer a model in which universal aftercare is available to all families in Tucson and that employees and employers can buy into the city's insurance plan for their children. And that way, we don't have the Kids Care Cliff where you have employers, or excuse me, employees and workers in all walks of life who turn down earning the extra money because they they don't want to lose their kids' care benefit. And to for me, we can mitigate that with a county-wide program. I think it's probably more important to be in a county program and collaborate with the county on it, but I think it's really important. The next philosophical shift I want to talk about is to, if we are unable to convince our unincorporated neighbors to incorporate, that we go to the state and ask them to change the law for Pima County. It really hurts us that the region's share of state shared revenues is compromised every year. It's not fair. It is completely weighted towards Phoenix. And it has been something that's plagued us for over thirty years, and it's about time we stand up for it. The next one I wanted to talk about is, you know, I think we're on our way there. But I'd love to see a return to the back-to-basics philosophy where we set aside money both for parks and and roads, for ward offices to decide on what they're doing. It can be a modest amount. But as the as the mayor was just talking about residential road maintenance, I think there is an avenue to put some one-time money on, at least for this year, for each ward to say, all right, these are the neighborhoods that didn't get three oh one, that didn't get four oh five. You know, we can identify those neighborhoods and then we can maybe take a look at the best road treatment for them. And having the ward offices be able to make that input for a modest amount, half million to a million dollars a ward office on back-to-basics roads is something I think worth doing. But I also think it's worth doing for parks. And that is where we put a hundred thousand for each ward office or maybe even quarter million, where we go, look, this playground needs to be replaced, let's replace it. Or this, we'd like to put a shade structure up on this playground, or we're going to resurface this basketball court. And these are things that the ward office could guide. And then you wouldn't have multiple, multiple, multiple conversations with park staff on every single park improvement you need. If if ward offices can't facilitate those improvements, then what good are they? Everything's going to be driven by, we can do it, we 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 know how to do it. I mean, if not, we shouldn't be elected. But I'm willing to take some of that responsibility. And again, some of the some of the tasks there and and take it off the burden of city staff who have a billion other things to do and say, all right, the ward office can drive this. And, you know, it'll be a delicate balance because there'll be situations where the ward office will probably make it more difficult for city staff. But there are also the situations where the ward office will make it very helpful for city staff. And we've just got to, the first year will be rocky, but if we have a program like that, that back-to-basics philosophy, I think that is part of the paradigm shift we're looking for. Finally, I really want to talk about our 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 customer service oriented policy with regard to with with regard to public safety, with water, with ES, where it's the one city account, where we have folks that we can engage through all of those different avenues. They can, they can even have a city credit card if they wanted to and and moving towards that in the next five years. And that can help us, you know, you shouldn't have to log into three different websites to pay your Ramada rental, your water bill, and your and your parking ticket. You should be able to do it all at once. So we've got to probably find some ways to do that. So those are the, look, I see a few of my colleagues kind of whatever, and that's because I've said this almost the same with a few changes for the last four years. But tho- those are the agendas that I'm going to continue to work on. I've added one, which is in the next discussion, which is the augmentation of Golf Links Road, which I will not, I I've made it very public, I will not support the RTA unless that's included in it. So that's everything. Other than that, thank you, Mayor, for your leadership and the rest of the council for taking a really awful, awful situation and one of the most challenging in our lifetimes. And we've made it livable and we've done it right. And, you know, I I can't say how proud I am today to do more, how more proud I am today about being a Tucson.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. Really appreciate it. I I think that what I heard you say is that you wanted to make sure that we continued our investment in KidCo, expand youth support and employment. That was something that was discussed back in January by yourself and others on the council. So that's a continuation of your of your thoughts. And I absolutely agree that that expanding KidCo. And as a matter of fact, this year, we had the opportunity to expand KidCo into Anfai School District as well as other East Side schools and Sunnyside. And so in terms of preschool, after-school and preschool, we had the opportunity to spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for scholarships, for childcare scholarships. And that is something that I hope to partner up and work with Pima County on a possibility of having the initiation of universal preschool for our children. And so hopefully, we can, we can work on that. In your comments about back-to-basics, I lived when the city of Tucson had the back-to-basics program. I used to work with Pima County Neighborhood Reinvestment with their bond-funded program, and it partnered with the city of Tucson Back-to-Basics program. And Mr. Manager, before Mr. Elias leaves, he needs to leave us all that history in writing in terms of how the city of Tucson managed to put back to basics, Joyce too, Joyce as well. Because it is, it is a very coordinated effort to to invest in our neighborhoods, whether it's their parks or their streets and a company combination of their needs. And I really do liken your commentary, Vice Mayor, to what Councilmember Santa Cruz mentioned before in terms of giving council offices and the residents that live in those wards some leeway in terms of how we invest in those particular wards. So I'm hearing, I'm hearing you all. I did want to, before I, you know, give the mic over to Joyce to talk us about participatory bu- budgeting, I did want to see if Councilmember Durham, you wanted to add some of your priorities to the conversation. If there are any that have changed from our January twenty twenty retreat or you want to put some on on top of of what we talked about back in January.
No, I can't think of anything.
All righty, thank you, Councilmember. I did want to include, in addition, right? Councilwoman Lee, I think you shared this with me yesterday. We, as a, as a community, as a mayor and council, have been talking about climate action and adaptation. Councilwoman Lee shared with me this report that was created by several university professors talking about livability in Arizona in the next ten years. And what her and I were flabbergasted and alarmed on is that there's going to be four or five different counties in Arizona that will be unlivable in the next ten to twenty years. And that includes Maricopa County, Yuma County, and others. And so I know that we've been very clear about taking action on climate, livability, sustainability, and adaptation for our city. I I do believe that we should continue down that road, down that path. And with the new presidential administration, with the Biden administration coming in, they do have an amazing climate action plan for our country. And they want to marry that climate action with infrastructure and green infrastructure and job creation and the green jobs of the future. So we might have a very good opportunity with our federal partners, our federal government, our congressional delegation to partner, to continue partnering and acting on climate. So with that, Joyce, if you can talk to us about this nifty graphic and talk to us about what we learned this past fiscal year and and budgeting process and and where we go with participatory budgeting.
So thank you, Mike, Mayor. Mr. Ortega is actually going to put up the plan, and he's going to walk through that. And then I'll talk about the one that we did for the last budget process.
Get it up. This one's the handwritten graphic. Yourself, or turn your speaker on. There we go. So Mayor, as Roger's getting us, the last one, I think, on item two, Roger's, that last piece. What we tried to do is outline for you, and it's really official-looking document here, that what the process for the budget is going to look like or hopefully will look like. And what I'll point to are the the top first. So we have some dates up there. Today's date, obviously, the eighteenth. Expecting to gather you again the week of the twenty-fifth. And then more conversation the weeks of the twenty-second and of February, and then in March, the middle of March. So those are, those are going to be the next, we'll say, the next three after today. It'll be important to the various priorities that you have. So please don't think you need to get everything in today. I think, Mayor, as you outlined right at the beginning, there's going to be an opportunity for more dialogue as time goes on, up to and including in some of the departments. I've asked them to, for all of them, to put together a two-page summary of of some of their, some of their goals and priorities moving forward. So you'll have that for the week of the twenty-fifth. Then down below is is where I think it's important. And this, I know Councilmember Santa Cruz mentioned, the public comment gathering of information from them. Mayor, I think you mentioned it as well. So I'm really trying to encapsulate that. So it's a parallel process. So there's, in essence, three pieces to this budget. There's the conversations that we're having with you. There's the conversations that we're having, either soliciting directly or having with the public, as well as, we'll call it the implementation piece, the boots on the ground, actually generating the documents themselves, which is the staff. So, Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions. Ultimately, our goal is to have the budget wrapped up by the first week of of May. That's the normal schedule. Last year was not normal, as you know, or this past year. But the goal is to have it wrapped up by the first week of May. So Mayor, with that, I'll turn it over to Joyce. She's going to cover the participatory piece. And we're happy to answer questions on any of this.
OK, thank you, Mike. We provided Mayor and Council memorandum which talks about, number one, what was going on during the timeframe when we were doing the participation tool last budget process. There was a lot of things going on, not only in our community. There was a lot of social injustice that was occurring. We were having some really significant events, not only with pandemic, but you know, the national politics that were occurring. So there are lessons learned by this, and and we actually put that together so quickly. I think for this year, it gives us an opportunity really to focus on specific pro- topics and then really engage our community on that. The other things with lessons learned is, we did this all on the computer digitally. Our community doesn't all have digital. So we do need to do a different type of outreach or alongside this. I mean, there's numerous ways to do it. Not only, we could have community dialogues. Once we're all able to get back together, we can do Zoom meetings. But then again, can we ensure that our whole community has that access to the same thing? So that was another lesson learned. The the other is, when we got response, it really was towards specific groups. They responded because of what was going on nationally and locally. So I think it it might have skewed some of our results. And along with the memorandum, we actually gave you, I think it's about a hundred and twelve pages of commentary, of which you could certainly read through that when in your spare time. But we were really glad the participation we did get, given the short period of time we did implement, how long it was up. It was only up for a very short window. But we use a tool called called OpenGov, and that platform is actually meant to do that. It is for transparency. It is to provide a place for your community to have input. So in that, we had one thousand five hundred and sixty-one respondents. We did ask for them to, the the respondents, to tell us, you know, what word they were in. And in the memorandum, there's actually a table, because not everybody would give that information. It wasn't a requirement to move on. But of the seven hundred and twelve participants, most of them were from Ward Six. And then we received the last amount from Ward Four. We had over two thousand six hundred emails come in. And I know that from your offices, you received a portion of that also. So I do think that it did provide mayor and council with a lot of information. And we try to put, you know, the the real major words that were being used in a word cloud, which is also part of the memorandum, so that you can see that at the time, they were talking about the community, the budget, defunding police, funding community programs. Those were some of the top words that were used, and that's that they're bigger within that word cloud. So that just means the more use that they had. We also gave you information and and broke down a hundred dollars. You know, where does the community want to apply a hundred dollars? What would that look like? We gave that information to you on the whole city budget, those that registered and did not register, and then the responses by ward, and also from those that are outside of the city. I think that it's good to note also in the materials, we put for you the types of respondents we had because not only did individuals respond, but organizations responded as well. They did reply about funding and or defunding police and then other issues. But definitely at the top of the two issues that were most spoke about, it was about police. So it's, I think, an ongoing dialogue. We would like as staff to continue with it and come up with different ways to engage our community on the priorities, and then that's how mayor and council, that will set things. And then the base, the budget then becomes the base of how we implement those priorities. So Ed, any questions?
Any questions from my colleagues?
I had, I had some questions. If I may, Mayor. OK, so I know we talked about this. So, you know, first of all, you know, I've shared, you know, my my gratitude to, you know, to your team, Joyce, for putting this together in such, you know, short time period. And also just kind of piloting how we can use a system like OpenGov here in in the city of Tucson. So we had talked about in the past, though, that it was misleading to include the enterprise fund and the general fund to make it look like a huge part of the city's. and the General Fund to make it look like a huge part of the city's, you know, funding allocation goes to Tucson Water, when we really can't, you know, we don't have, as Mayor and Council, any control um of those funds. That we can't, like, reallocate that into something else and needs to um stay within within water or environmental services. And so I think there was a bit of a disconnect and kind of misinformation to the community when we're putting those two pots of money together and, like, they had to say, you know, um, in the two pots. So I think it's really important to um clarify what the Enterprise Fund does and how that operates, and then the General Fund and how, when we are um, where we get a little more um, I guess, where we have a little more agency as Mayor and Council is on the General Fund and then what that allocation looks like. So I think that that's, that's an important clarification that we need to do um moving forward. What I am wondering about staff, um did we look at what what other cities and how other cities were using their participatory budgeting process? And then how did that advise or inform their mayor and councils?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Santa Cruz. And so first, I don't disagree with the Enterprise Funds. What we were trying to achieve was to just let the public know the size of the budget and and what, how it works. I know there's a lot of education that needs to be completed with that. And I definitely think that the focus can be on the General Fund. That's not an issue. We have looked at others, and um we will certainly take some lead from that. I mean, it's, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, right? We can actually use that and then just uh make sure it fits with the city of Tucson. When we put it together last time, we didn't have a lot of time to get it into um play. So we will definitely do a better job next time.
Okay, and then I guess, like, just my um my last comment, Joyce, is that um I I yeah, you said something right now about the skewed results, and they have everything to do with what was happening um nationally. And I think, like, what I just want to make sure that we're, it's not like a one and done. Like, that's what was happening this summer, and we're not going to see that again, that, like, a lot of social movements, you know, they they are around for the long, you know, a long term, when they want to bring, you know, significant change. And I think um that it's kind of like not fair, you know, to dismiss that as, I guess, what happened this summer. I think we're being challenged, you know, in this time about how we're going to address um like, the root causes of a lot of these issues and not just continue to put Band-Aids. So I think folks in the community are asking us to think, um to kind of know our history and how we ended up where we're at today, so that we can better, you know, address these issues um moving forward. And I, so I don't think, I don't think it's going to go, I'll I'll just say it's not going to go away, you know? Like, folks are going to continue, folks in the community are continuing to ask us to address root causes of a lot of the societal problems that we have. And I know it's not just our responsibility as Mayor and Council, you know? This is at the national level, um even dealing with with homelessness, you know? Like, uh, funding for housing and all of that from the federal level has really diminished um over over the years and put all the responsibility in cities that have very limited funding um to address a lot of these issues. But I just want to make sure that that we're not framing it as a, just, it's something that happened this summer. It's going to continue to come back to us.
Okay, um I I think that it's the, I think we're going to have to work parallel, Joyce, and Jeff, uh on the participatory, the details of the participatory budgeting process, as well as the input um from Mayor and Council on how we put the the budget together. And if there is an exploration of how other cities do participatory budgeting, bring it to Mayor and Council so that we can decide together how, like, what are the details and logistics of what we'd like to see in terms of um public participation? Um and I'll I'll close this item with something that you put, Joyce, in your memo that really hit home, and that I want to make sure that we continue on to the next item that um, which will be our our financial item. Each step in this process is to be intentional about equity, transparency, and engagement. And that's absolutely right on. You hit the nail on the head. And with that, we need to move on to item three. We have a hard stop um at two fifteen, so I I do want to keep us moving. Joyce, this next item is item three. And time has been set aside for an overview of the General Fund budget. Mr. Manager and Joyce.
Okay, I'm hoping, uh Roger, do you mind putting up the presentation?
Yeah, Roger, if you could uh put that on. Mayor, I'll just turn it right over to Joyce. I know we're really short on time, so I don't need any introductory comments here. We'll just turn it right over to Joyce.
All right, uh I think uh Mayor and Council is Rogers getting that together. I I just wanted to start with, uh this is a an update. We'll talk about where we end of fiscal year twenty, because when we talked in November seventeenth, the audit wasn't complete. I will let you know that the comprehensive annual financial report, I will have um a draft of that. So we are, we're right there. I'm looking forward to having it, because it's essential that we have this information ready for the rating agencies as we go out for the pension obligation bonds in January. So um if you'll go to the next slide, please. What that shows is our um un-audited, so from Nov- November seventeenth, there was one little change. It's about a hundred thousand dollars.
Can you make, can you make that bigger, please, the the? Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, that's great. So um the revenues were still the same, five hundred and fifty-one point nine million dollars. Where the change occurred was with our, with our transfers to other funds. As we go through the audit process, sometimes costs do not get classified in the right place, and they have to be moved. Uh and then all that's a little bit of a cleanup that we did. But what I want in Mayor and Focus to, of Mayor and Council to remember is the um, how much the CARES dollars that we got helped us at the end of last fiscal year. As you'll recall, we were able, out of the CRF funds, to use twenty-four, almost twenty-five million dollars for eligible payroll costs. And also the dollars that we got from the FTA grant of forty-four million dollars, we used twenty-seven point three million dollars to help provide the operating costs for our transit system to keep our community moving through this pandemic. So you'll see that last um time we talked, our revenues over expenditures was about seventy-two point nine million. It's now seventy-three, so a hundred thousand dollar change. And that's it for that fiscal year. So we'll close it. So if we go on to our working projections for this fiscal year, I have a few items I really want to bring to your attention. Um and it's on the next chart. So we're in fiscal year twenty-one, and we do a working projection. Couple of major things here. Number one, Proposition two oh seven passed. So that's the marijuana legalization. What we know from that is that the city of Tucson will receive sales taxes. They'll receive it through our own taxes, and then the other port part will be the state shared revenue sales tax. So for this fiscal year, and and there's two separate lines, you'll actually see marijuana legislation initiative. For our sales tax, we're thinking about one point six million dollars for this fiscal year. And then the state shared about four hundred thousand. Those are just estimates, because so far it hasn't been enacted. We're expecting March. And we may be a little bit conservative, we just don't know, until we start seeing those revenues coming in. But all in all, what we think is, this year we'll get about two million dollars from that. Uh next year, you'll see that in the in the um five-year projection, anywhere between eight and nine million dollars, just from that proposition change. I also would like to bring uh Mayor and Council down to the expenditures. So this is where, um as you'll remember, again, on November seventeenth, Mayor and Council um asked staff to come back with a plan for compensation for employees. This is number one, to ensure that we raise the city's minimum wage to fifteen dollars per hour. The other is the impacts, I'm sorry, Councilmember.
You said fifteen bucks an hour, correct?
I did, I said fifteen dollars per hour. And then any related um adjustments that needed to be made for that. And this is where what we're, we've come up with that dollar amount. And that's that one line there that says seven hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Now, we planned for this um to begin in February. So that is not an annual amount, it's just a partial. It does address the grade codes that we call the nine hundred series. So it's our non-exempt employees. It does, um, there's about two hundred employees who would actually see some kind of grace through that. It does also take into consideration, and and this is the next line we put in for Mayor and Council is, and this is up to Mayor and Council, what does it look like if we were to offer all our other employees a one percent increase? So we used one percent, because that's an easy multiplier, right? If you wanted to say two percent, you just, you know, times two. Or if you want to say one and a half, you just divide that in half and add it to it. So we put that in there. But along with the fifteen dollar minimum and any adjustments, what we looked at is, where would be the employee would be better off? Taking the adjustment because of the fifteen dollar minimum or the one percent? So that's what's in the seven hundred and twenty-one, one thirty. So we've put this in, so you would see then what would be our financial results for the end of this fiscal year. We'll look at that on an annual basis on the next slide. But if you can see, our revenues over expenditures with this change, as presented to you, is four million dollars to the good, to our fund balance.
Joyce, really, really quick, does that one percent, to some degree, express um address some of those compression worries we had?
Uh, so the fifteen dollars an hour itself creates compression, if you just raise everybody to fifteen dollars, right? So if you have an employee that's at the minimum of thirteen twenty, and then you have another employee that's been here for, let's call it, five years, and they're at fourteen ninety, and you bring the thirteen twenty up to the fifteen, and you bring the other one up to fifteen, now you have compression. So we've had, so what we're saying is, we don't want the guy that's that's been here longer to be just at fifteen. We're going to increase that.
So that's what the one percent is for, that's what I'm asking.
Two different things, two different things. Okay, so I just want, let's separate the fifteen dollars an hour out of the equation. The one percent would be for all other employees who are not part of that fifteen dollar per hour adjustment.
One percent is to address the compression issue that may come up, no?
No, no, sir.
No. But Joyce, how many, how many?
Cola, let's call it a one percent cola for everybody.
Okay, one percent cola, okay. So Joyce, how many employees we talking about that are fitting the category and bringing them up to fifteen percent, fifteen bucks an hour?
Um, that category, the seven hundred and twenty-one, that's about two thousand employees.
You have more. Somebody did. Vice Mayor, can you, can you make sure that you put yourself on mute?
What do you think of my hair?
Who's that?
Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor.
Maybe go do some fun.
Who's that?
All righty, there you go. Go ahead, Joyce.
Thank you. All right, so, and I'm not sure, I just want to make sure Vice Mayor understands that the fifteen dollars an hour includes the fifteen dollars. It takes care of any compression that would occur by the fifteen dollars. And then what we looked at is, if if that compression or the fifteen dollars, if the employee would have been better off with the one percent, we're giving them the one percent. Okay, so that's that two simple employees. Okay, and then the other one is just like a cola, a one percent for the rest of the, rest of the employees.
Will there be any employees getting both the fifteen dollar and the one percent?
No.
All right, that that was kind of where I was, that was the question I was at. That's, let me rephrase it that way.
Very good. All right, so um we can um go on to the five-year forecast, because I think it's important for Mayor and Council to be aware of what this looks like long term. Uh I do want to just say, this is a working model. So what I get concerned about is, you'll see the projected for fiscal year twenty-two, and you'll think that's the budget, but it's not. We have a long way to go until we finalize the fiscal year twenty-two budget, right? Uh we haven't completed twenty-one, but there's a lot of processes that are going to be going on. And this is a working model. It's a long-term view of what our financials could look like, given whatever changes occur. And and like I said, um, we don't know what's going to happen with the pandemic. This is what we know now, and we'll continually bring this back to Mayor and Council every month, and it'll be an ongoing discussion. So uh again, with the revenues, uh we are particip-, we're expecting growth. We're expecting about a three percent from fiscal year twenty-one to twenty-two in our sales taxes. And then from there, a modest growth, about two point eight percent. So you'll see the marijuana legislation, again, that's a separate line. So we're looking at the one point six million dollars this year, but it goes up to about six million, six three in the following year. And that will increase along with the same lines as our sales taxes. At least that's the projection we got, we have in here, until we see what that looks like as the dollars are coming in. So those are really our major increases coming from the marijuana legislation. So you have six point three for fiscal year twenty-two, and then the one point eight in the state shared sales taxes. So think, that's eight million, over eight million dollars, just from that change. Um, our projection for fiscal year twenty-two is five hundred and fifty-nine million dollars. I think that's a a good change from where we are this year. I mean, it does say that the economy is growing and that we're on track. We do have um different indicators throughout the rest of the projection on the revenues. We're anticipating that people will start coming back to Tucson and start um filling the rooms again in our hotels and motels. We'll be back on track for our events that are part of our community. So I think it's all in all a a good indicator of our revenues. Again, I want to bring Mayor and Council's um attention to the expenditures. So this is where we actually put in the annualized amount for the wages. So on our prior slide, we talked about the one pers-, the fifteen dollars per hour change. That then is a partial year for this year, and then we have an annual amount of one point seven million dollars. And that just continues, it's not part of the salary and benefits adjustment in the line above. We just wanted to show that that continues through the whole projection from, from, you know, this point forward. We also are showing the one percent wage increase. So again, it's a partial year for this fiscal year, annualized next year, and then it moves forward. So you may be asking the question as, well, shouldn't that just increase every year by the one percent? So if it's two point six, the next year, wouldn't it be, uh, you know, over five million dollars? Well, no, that's not what we're saying here. What we're saying is, there's only a a one time that we're saying that there's a increase. And then we go into the the performance of the, if you recall, we had a um pay-for-performance plan, a whole retention plan that we put in play for many, many years. And we put a placeholder in here to say to Mayor and Council, this is what it may look like if we have an ongoing performance-based adjustments for our employees. The other increase I wanted to point out, you will see a salaries and benefits increase year after year. That's not from more positions, and it's not from um well, adding more positions or any other wage increases. That's because our health care will continue to rise. So we have put in a ten percent uh increase every year for health benefits. That may change. Uh we know we're we're out for an RFP right now, but we'll continually watch that. But for this projection, it is a ten percent increase. The other item I wanted to make note of is, you'll see that there's the PSPRS Pension Bond Debt Service. So we are going out for bonds in January. We're very excited, the market is holding for us. Uh we have a great story to tell the rating agencies, so I'm expecting to have a great day in the market when we do this. Now, as you'll remember, that's to stabilize the PSPRS. So the debt service, while you'll see that it's only thirty-three million dollars or thirty-four million dollars and thirty-six, we're just stabilizing PSPRS. We are still paying. We're just stabilizing PSPRS, we are still paying seventy seven million dollars annually. A part of that is a general fund contribution which goes into a section one fifteen trust. And then the other part is the debt service that the city will be paying on the bonds. So I just want to keep that in mind, it's not that we're just paying less to PSPRS. We just stabilized the increases to the general fund and we have already built in what the general fund will pay. So then in services, supplies and others, those are just nominal increases on what's occurring. We did put in the dollars for parks and recreation, the new parks and equipment that we're putting in. We did put in maintenance for that and ongoing maintenance. We also have increases to our technology software increases that has also been put into this. The other place to note is the debt service. So I think this is a really important to know, we're at twenty four million dollars for our cops right now. By the end of this projection in fiscal year twenty six, you're going to be down to fourteen point seven million dollars. So it is declining in this projection, we've also. Taken into consideration the refunding that we just did. We'll continue to look at any market opportunities to refund other certificates to continually reduce that debt service payment. The revenues over or under expenditures, you'll see that line item, this fiscal year looks great. But as we talked about the changes that are occurring, even though the revenues are coming back into place. We still are looking at, there's not enough revenues to cover our ongoing expenses. And that holds true through fiscal year twenty six. When the debt surface for the cops decreases significantly. Again, we have a cumulative, what does that mean over the course of the next five years? So you can see by the time you get into fiscal year twenty five, it's a negative forty five million dollars. So if you weren't doing anything and you were going to just use your fund balance, that's what would occur. Is the fund balance would just start being eaten up and we actually show that on the next slide. So that's what this slide indicates is what would be the impact? On our fund balance if if you didn't do anything, if you chose to use the unassigned. To just do ongoing costs, but that's not how we've been working, right? We've been actually being able to get this budget into balance. I think we certainly still have a great opportunity to do that as you think about your priorities, where your direction wants to go. It's an ongoing process, it's an ongoing talk with you, with the directors and anything is possible. I also, I know that mayor and council have talked a lot about the the streets and funding for it. We don't talk a lot about the HERF fund, but I just want to remind mayor and council that their debt service will be paid up in fiscal year twenty two. So just from HERF, you'll have an additional twenty million dollars available there for roads. So just keep in mind when you are doing your planning and we'd be open for any questions.
Thank you Joyce, really appreciated. All in all, good news, we're very financially healthy. I just want to ask about the fifteen dollar an hour adjustment because I know that mayor and council. As that we take a look at this fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage proposal. And so I just want to, one. Clarify that the, on the five year projections sheet, that you have a fifteen dollar per hour. And other related adjustments, which is the compression, right? So it's a fifteen minimum wage and accompanying compression.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that we're clear on that. And that it's a separate discussion, the one percent cost of living.
Yes.
Okay, good.
And Madam Mayor, if I might too, because the fifteen dollar an hour, this is just the general fund portion. And we have many employees who work like in our utilities, our enterprise funds and and HERF. And even housing of which they would also be part of this discussion.
Okay, great, so so the seven twenty one you show the first year is only general fund?
Only general fund, yes, that's correct.
Okay, does this particular plan presented to us address the concerns? That many of our blue and white collar workers who did not receive the last market increase? Is it included here? Because we did, we did market increase and compression on.
Compression.
And decompression, I'm sorry, and decompression on public safety. But there was a one, you know, there was a group of of employees that did not receive. That adjust, that market rate adjustment?
So we did a full decompression for everyone. I I think though, what you'll see in this and I think what employees will be pleased at is the way that that we've done and approached this. There are some some really positive wage increases.
Okay, and. Just want to make sure that we we have the one percent wage increase, like you said, would be. The one percent that you've shown us is one point zero eight, the the remaining of this fiscal year. And then two point six a complete fiscal year.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. I think under the current proposal, staff has put together, we have the opportunity to raise the wages for our lowest paid workers. To provide them a living wage of fifteen dollar an hour while addressing the resulting compression issues. So if I may, so we could move things along, I would like to entertain a motion to move forward. With the plan to raise the minimum wage to fifteen dollar an hour for city workers. And make related compression adjustments to ta, take effect as soon as possible, no later than February of twenty twenty one.
So, Your Honor, I'll second that, Madam Mayor, I want to make sure the city manager. Jumps in on this and makes sure that we have the the funding available to do that with the one percent cola.
So there is a motion and a second and it's separate motions, council member, this is just the fifteen dollar an hour. And and decompression issues. Mr. Ortega.
Mayor, I do have confidence in our financial position. I will tell you that as we get down a little later in the conversation, we'll talk about recruitment and retention issues going forward. Happy to have that, but I'm comfortable with the fifteen dollars an hour at this point.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Just a quick question, I'm supportive of the motion, but what? Why didn't see the internet sales revenues, was that embedded in your sales tax assumptions?
Yes, they are.
Okay, and where did you get your data for the pot sales, marijuana stuff?
From the state.
Okay, so that's a, that's an assumption, right?
It's an assumption, yes.
And what assumptions are you making with respect to our revenues? The fact that we've lost like Fort Worth shootout and the book festival and the Fourth Avenue Street there and the. Gem show, where where does that fit into your projections for this coming fiscal year?
So we, that's actually part of the sales tax and the transient occupancy and hotel motel taxes and they are down. So our sales tax are flat.
Okay, so you've built those assumptions.
We've built those assumptions in, yes, sir.
Alrighty, so any further discussion on this particular motion and then we can continue the finance conversation and move into item four. So all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, any opposed? Motion passes. Any further questions on?
I heard that we were going to give them about sixty days to come back to us on that. Wouldn't I, in February, it will be implemented, is that what I heard correctly?
Yes, implemented by February of twenty one.
Okay.
Mayor, just a point of clarification, I want to make sure that we've got clarity here. The, my understanding is the direction is to implement the fifteen dollars an hour and the resulting decompression immediately. No later than February, we believe we can do that, it'll be very close to that February timeframe. I am not planning to come back to you with that, because I've already got the direction. We will have to bring back a compensation plan revision, but that can happen down the road a little bit. I'm going to give direction to the staff to move quickly to get that fifteen dollar an hour and resulting decompression. Immediately, so I just want to make sure we're clear that the decision's made and we're we're moving in that direction. I'll bring back the comp plan revision per the code in in the future, but right now we're moving in this direction, that's what you all.
Yes, yes, sir, that was the intention of the of the motion.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I might. I'm sorry, I I just need clarification for myself because as we discussed with the fifteen dollars an hour, it does include either the one percent. Or not to those particular workers, you want us to still include the one percent just for that, those workers?
I'm sorry, what was the question again, Joyce?
Alright, so in in the wages for the fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage. We did the fifteen dollars, we did the decompression and then we looked at the one percent and said. If the one percent is better for that employee, we'll give them the one percent. I just want to clarify, Madam Mayor. On if if the one percent for those workers is still in there or?
Yeah, yes, Joyce.
Okay.
Separate from the cola, right, the one percent from the cola is a separate conversation.
It would be separate from that.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions on our budget? I do have one question, Joyce, well, maybe a couple, but I did want to refer. To the assigned. Slide, assigned, unassigned, let me see, if you have it. I'm looking on my my paperwork. In the assigned twenty twenty one.
Yes.
You had given us a copy of the. Assigned fund balance.
Yes.
The previous, yeah, it was in the previous. Budget presentation that you gave us.
Yes.
Is a fiscal year twenty twenty one assignment for operations. That is listed at thirty million dollars.
Yes.
I just wanted to circle around with you to ask you about that because that is the difference between the assigned nineteen twenty fiscal year. Versus the assigned twenty twenty one fiscal year.
Yes, and thank you for bringing that up, Madam Mayor. So if you'll recall, when we adopted the budget. We thought at that time, we were going to have to use thirty million dollars of our fund balance to cover the operations for fiscal year twenty one. We're now in twenty one and our revenues didn't decrease as much as they were. So therefore, we don't need to assign that thirty million anymore, it becomes unassigned. But because the budget was adopted that way, twenty appears that way.
Okay.
Okay? But in twenty one, it's been released.
So it goes back to unassigned?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great, great, great. What fund balance category are surplus revenues allocated to committed stabilization? Assigned or unassigned, so specifically, how was the seventy three million in cash carry forward from twenty? Distributed amongst the fund balance categories, assigned or unassigned?
Okay, so the first thing that occurred was we took ten percent of the revenues. And that goes to the stabilization fund. So that's why you, it used to be twenty two point eight million dollars. And when we discussed with mayor and council in November, we went to the fifty four point nine, so that hits our target. On the financial policies that mayor and council approved. It's the first time we've been able to do that and, you know, I've been here. Doing this for well over ten years and so we were able to do that, so now it's in the stabilization fund, ten percent of revenues. The assigned, we we walked through that with mayor and council and I think you have a whole listing. Of what those items are, which includes some contingencies for fuel. Some vehicle replacement costs, it includes vehicle maintenance, there's also the eight million dollars for. The settlement that occurred many years ago, so it's just set aside there. And you're probably going to, I don't have the full list in front of me, there's also, I think, mayor and council approved. The public safety communication buildings, that would be six million dollars, so those types of items then make up the assigned. And then everything else falls to the bottom.
Got it, thank you, and then the committed stabilization target, which I'm so proud of us. For accomplishing, which is the fifty four million dollars. And the unassigned target is seven percent.
Yes.
That's the, that's the committed and committed stabilization plus the unassigned balance. Is what makes our rainy day fund.
Yes.
Am I correct?
Well, the the stabilization is really the rainy day because until you use up. The other pieces, the assigned and unassigned, mayor and council really aren't able to put that within the budgeting process. Until those two items are used up.
Okay.
But we don't want that to happen.
We want to make sure we keep the ten percent, that's right, that's absolutely right. And and the goal of is seven percent of unassigned.
It's a goal, yes.
Okay, alrighty, any other questions? And I'm not seeing, I'm just seeing the. I don't know if my colleagues on the council, did you have any other questions on Vice Mayor?
So, Your Honor, the way I'm reading this is that we're going to, we're projecting a forty four million dollar loss. In five years and we're going to spend down the unassigned fund balance to balance this, is that what I'm reading?
No, we are not, the. The as as presented and you might want to. I might be completely wrong, Joyce. What I'm seeing is that we have, in the five year projection, we have a. Forty five million dollar, forty four million dollar deficit. But that does not include the unassigned fund balance, am I correct, Joyce?
Well, so, if you if you look at the five year model and the revenues are not. Going to cover the ongoing expenses as we have them forecast. So the fund balance does decrease by that amount. But what I would think is what we've done under your leadership is to balance the budget every year, so that does not occur.
Okay.
But it, so it means that we we have a lot of work to do in order to ensure a budget, a balanced budget.
I I'm fine with that, I just want to be sure. Because again, we don't really know what the economy is going to do post pandemic. We don't, there's a lot of unknowns and we're. Joyce, I wanted to say that I want to thank you and your team, I know this is. This is your last budget cycle and what you've done over the last three years is created a series of masterpieces. That have kept, that have changed the financial stability of the city. From when I first started, we're a hundred and fifty million dollars different. Actually, probably more like two hundred million dollars. Delta from from the bad to the good in this last decade. So thank you. And I like that we have these realistic understanding that if we want to maintain. The level of fiscal success that we've had, we're going to have to find new creative solutions like we always have and we will. And I just wanted to say, I appreciate that, we'll see, I guess, on some of the projections, on on some of these projections, are you including the end of the? Four oh ones and the one oh ones and the four oh fives and. We have some sales tax falling off, right, so are those included in the projections?
Vice Mayor Cunningham, and I, first, I want to thank you for those wonderful words, we couldn't do that without your support, right, fiscally, so thank you very much. We couldn't do that without your support, right, fiscally, so thank you very much. The the propositions are not part of the general fund. They actually reside in their own funds. What we have taken into consideration is ongoing maintenance increase for the parks piece within these projections. Yes.
Then that that works and then and we can fold that into either the department budget or we could fold it into a back-to-basics program if we wanted. So that that's where I was going with it as usual, thinking, you know, I I like where we're at. All right. I'm 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 sorry for interjecting, Your Honor.
No, no problem, no problem, Vice Mayor. Good, good questions. We're also just wanted to make sure that we are not assuming in our transfers to other funds, we're not assuming potential federal transit administration help in this round of COVID relief from the federal government, right?
We are not, Madam Mayor.
We are not. So if in this particular round of relief, there is funds for our transit system, we we would need to revise these projections.
Absolutely, and they will be revised probably every month as we go through the budget process.
Okay, so that would could possibly relieve us of an additional twenty-two forty hopefully into the into and into our general fund. Okay. Yes. Sure, I just want to keep, I just want to make sure that we are keeping in mind.
I just want to echo what the Vice Mayor said about Joyce's tutorship. She's led us through some harrowing times. We've come out and and I want to congratulate her and the City Manager on their tutorship for the budget issues. But also, Joyce had a question on the marijuana, recreational marijuana, or the adult choice, they call it now. Is that a low projection or is that a middle-sized projection or it could be more funding coming in from there?
I call it conservative, council member, so we just don't know and we won't know until we start seeing what kind of revenues come in. I I know that Colorado, when they enacted it, they thought they were going to have a windfall and it ended up not being as much as they thought. So I'd like to say it's a conservative estimate.
I think the correct answer is it's a high projection.
The other question, Joyce, was the fifteen dollars, is that already in the projections, the cost that you produced? Okay, great.
Yes, it is.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
All righty, just for the, just to keep the time consideration, we should move to item four. Time has been set aside for a discussion on focus goals pertaining to transportation and employee retention and recruitment, Mr. Manager.
Mayor, this is where I thought we were going earlier and I apologize. So I've already given all my comments on that. If you would like to have Diana Larkon give a very brief overview of the Move Tucson informations in your packet, happy to do that. I would like to save some time to talk about the employee retention and recruitment issues that I see going forward. So if you're okay, Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to Diana.
Yes, let's have a discussion with Diana and then and then talk about retention and recruitment.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Diana, if you can blast us through this.
Yes, ma'am. I will blast you through it. Thank you very much, Mayor and council members for this opportunity. Now, we heard at the prior council meeting very clearly that Move Tucson is going to be the framework for the discussion of RTA Next. And so I just want to highlight, we did provide you with an executive summary, but I did want to highlight some of the things that we recognize that came from our community through Move Tucson. And so what we did learn through the surveys that we did with the community is that they do want an increased travel choice, so they want to have multiple choices in moving. So it goes back to the conversation the City Manager had on mobility. They want us to focus in on improving safety. And they also want us to invest in the current infrastructure we have. So those were the three really top-leading items. And then then there was, it was kind of broken into some additional buckets, I want to call it. So on the conversation of safety, what really the the community shared with us is they really wanted to focus on making our streets safe, that we had less people that were killed on the street and that we really focused in on those that are most vulnerable on the streets, such as those folks that are walking and biking. Maintenance was another real important bucket that they provided for us. They really want us to focus in on our current aging infrastructure. They want us to not only focus on improving the pavement quality, but they want us to focus on improving sidewalks. They want us to focus on bus stop improvements. They want us to focus on that mobility, that connectivity. So that was a really big takeaway for us as well. Efficiency was another big focus, and that's where they really want us to look at modernizing what we have today. So going back to what Councilwoman Nikki Lee had mentioned about smart cities and moving to adaptive signalizations where we're working our, we're moving traffic based on real-time scenarios versing on timing. You know, there's a lot of capacity improvement opportunities just through modernizing our current signalization. And that was another big takeaway that we got from the community. And of course, the last takeaway was that kind of led back to that travel choice is they wanted more high-quality travel options. They wanted to be about comfort and connection and accessibility and to work on getting through over those barriers and especially focusing in on our most vulnerable community members. So those were the big takeaways that we that we have provided for you. And then there's some additional background information, but that's the high level that I really want to share with y'all. So it kind of leads into the whole conversation that's been having in reference to the maintenance and then just transportation as a whole. So with that, I'll turn it back over and I'm here to answer any questions that y'all might have.
So with with this particular presentation, Move Tucson is the direct input of Tucsonans.
Yes, ma'am.
And these priorities set for us by Tucsonans should really inform the discussion with the RTA.
Yes, ma'am.
One-on-one. So for me, my question is, what's, what are the next steps with RTA? Because I know that the RTA Executive Director has requested from Mr. Ortega that we have a list, we wanted to wait to get the executive summary from Move Tucson. What are the next steps? Because I I think it's important that the city of Tucson go back to the RTA and say, these are the priorities of Tucsonans and how are we going to make it happen to have to have the city of Tucson be on board with the RTA? Mr. Ortega? Or Diana?
Actually, I was going to, I know that we have prepared a letter to send back to the RTA for the City Manager that kind of highlights exactly what you said, that we want to have another conversation with them because we are invested in this really strong community-driven initiative through Move Tucson. And we want Move Tucson to actually be what shapes our ask for RTA Next. And so I will ask the City Manager to add anything, but that's really the direction we're moving in and and looking forward to those conversations.
Mr. Ortega?
Mayor, thank you, and thank you, Diana. That's consistent. All I'm doing is basically reinforcing what I heard from the council at the last meeting and letting them know that there is a public process that we're going through. And once that is complete, then there'll be a conversation with the Mayor and City Council to develop priorities and then we'll we'll transmit to them, transmit those to them in the future. That's all, Mayor.
And so we're, Ms. Larkon said that we're preparing that memo to the RTA to inform them of our interests and how we'd like to invest based on Tucsonans' input.
Yes, Mayor, so the the detail of the investment plan will be informed by feedback from you once you see the results of the Move Tucson. But I'm putting them on notice that that's coming. So that's really, there'll be two. So one is the notice, the other is actually the the details of the point.
All righty, Diana, and then I'm going to want to open it up to my colleagues on the council.
So just to add, Mayor, to what the City Manager has said, you know, we are getting ready to launch our virtual open house to provide back to the community what we've collected. And then we're looking to take some more feedback. And that's going to include the guiding principles that also line up with our Complete Street Initiative. From that, we'll be working on prioritizing because we have received a lot of feedback from the community, a large number of requests of projects that are tied with Move Tucson, and we need to prioritize those projects. So we do plan on bringing back some recommendations of how those projects get prioritized, Mayor and Council, in February, so that we can get your input and make sure that we're in line and it's in line with the guiding principles. That prioritization of the projects will be what will actually create our action plan that will feed into the RTA Next. And we're looking to have that finalized by April and May. So we'll be back before y'all in February and then again in April. So just a little bit of a timeline. Thank you.
Any questions and input from my colleagues? Steve?
So I haven't seen the letter that you're preparing, obviously, but a couple of things that I think that they need to, they need to hear. Number one is that we're sixty-two percent of their tax base. The project lists that they've requested are equal among the nine jurisdictions. That's that's not going to fly with Tucson voters. Secondly, in your survey results, sixty-three percent of the respondents cited repaving streets as a priority and sixty-eight percent cited safety. Last time we heard, the RTA was not intending to include pavement preservation as a part of their package. And last time around, safety elements were only nine percent of the RTA budget, and we only got half that. So we're projecting in your, in our twenty-year plan, eight hundred and sixty million dollars of safety and pavement preservation needs. If the RTA is not going to address the city of Tucson residents' priorities, then we shouldn't even be supporting them, putting it on the ballot, in my opinion. Our eight hundred and sixty million dollars over twenty years, they're wanting to take our our citizens' tax money for the next twenty years and put it into something that doesn't reflect their priorities. I think that would be a huge miss if we didn't dig our heels in and say, look, here are the results. Here's our sixty-two percent. Here's how they need to be allocated. Those are my comments.
And the others?
I I, excuse me, Madam Mayor, I echo what Councilman Kusatchik said. We need to show that there's going to be a balance. Look at Maricopa Association of Governments, they have weighted voting and because most of the residents live in the city. So we need to look at some of the things that we're doing now, but I I breathe the project safety is an issue and paving is a big issue right now.
So Councilmember Feimt is, what I'd like to get from both Steve and my other colleagues and yourself is we want to make sure that we're writing a letter back to the RTA with these intentions, right? So the intention of, hey, we are sixty-two percent of the tax base and we're going to show you sixty-two percent of what we, you know, of what we expect the the Hafensal sales tax to garnish. And this is how we in the city of Tucson want to spend it. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, that's, I agree.
All righty, Vice Mayor?
I've got a few things on this issue and I've made it, I I think we're all on the same page that we want equity and we want we want to be represented. I actually go even farther and say that we probably should get more than sixty-two percent of the share. But that's just how I've been my whole life when it comes to Tucson. At this point, we're in a situation where we're literally going to back something that because we get a few dollars in crumbs here and there, it actually creates more competition for us. It creates people not wanting to necessarily live in the city limits. I mean, it actually works not to our benefit. If if you're, if you're running the city of Tucson, which I guess, and all lessons we're doing, there's no way strategically that this is beneficial to us from like a strategic on where in the business of creating a municipal government standpoint. There's, there's just, it's not enough. So they should, and not only that, and this is the hard part, I don't think they grasp the the the, they need to grasp the idea that the city voters are the one that carries these things. They'll get a, there'll be a no vote outside of the city. The majority of the people outside of the city don't even want to vote for this. So to me, it's kind of like a quandary that we're in. And I think we should go with those specific demands. I think Steve's right on the money that if we're going to build something, we should have the maintenance and upkeep built into it. And then the second piece is, of course, for me, is the, there's a thoroughfare piece for, there's the walkability part that we want, but there's also the thoroughfare piece that can relieve some of our traffic point. I mean, our traffic pressure. Traffic is like the circulatory system of the body. It's all connected. And, you know, every single stopgap can cause stopgaps somewhere else. A counterintuitive to what people may think, an accident on Grant and, say, Tucson Boulevard can actually affect traffic at Tucson at Twenty Second and Wilmot. It can, just because of how everything's networked through. And so for us, for a for for a number of people who have to go east to west every day, or west to east for that matter, we have to have a corridor that can do that quickly and efficiently. And we cannot do that without augmenting golf links and Barazza. So it's one continuous stretch from downtown links to the gateway on the east side. And Councilmember Lee and I have talked about this, Councilmember Scott and I talked about this for years. And I I can't, I've say, I want to say it today very clearly, so the public knows that if that is not on the RTA package, then I will lead, personally lead the no initiative.
And Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, one of the priorities for Tucsonans is better ways to travel across town. So you're not, you're not saying something that Tucsoners are not saying, and I absolutely agree with you. Councilmember Santa Cruz.
Thank you, Mayor. I also agree with everything that my colleagues have said today. The other piece that I wanted to add is that I am hesitant to the twenty-year, you know, timeframe. Like, why couldn't it be a shorter five to ten-year? Because projects that we're foreseeing are going to be needed twenty years from now might not be the case. So how, instead of just making projections way out there that we think about having a shorter timeframe and actually completing the projects on that list?
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Lee, would you want to add anything or Councilmember Durham?
Mayor, I didn't have any specific comments. I I feel very strongly that the the feedback from the the residents is consistent with what we hear in our office every day, safety, the local streets, that's the, that's what people want to see addressed. So I think it's all consistent. I agree with everything that everyone has said. So I don't really have anything extra to add right now.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Steve, and then I just wanted to also ask Councilmember Durham. Go ahead, Steve.
Oh, yeah, and and Nikki just was nuanced in what she just said. She said local streets. So the residential streets matter. This isn't a matter of repaving arterials. It's a matter of allocating dollars for local, for residential streets. And I would also add that Paul's and and your comments about cross-city traffic, there are, there are ways to do that with a smart, with a smart signalization as well. You know, and so we don't have to expand capacity in order to achieve that. Although the the example that Paul gave is is, you know, an appropriate example of where that is, you know, the connection that he's he described. But it doesn't mean you got to go, and I'll use the current example because it's a construction project that's over my right shoulder right now, is expanding Broadway to eight lanes and a hundred and fifty feet simply didn't make sense. We can achieve the, through signalization improvements, the same kinds of things that the voters are asking for.
Right, and that includes the sustainable cities, like people want, Tucsoners want transportation options that support the sustainable city, right? So we want to make sure that we're investing in bus rapid transit, that we're investing in connectivity for bicycles and pedestrians. And so that's absolutely, Councilmember Kusatchik, what what people want. I believe that the next step for this particular conversation is sending a letter to the RTA with a commentary. to the RTA with the commentary heard here, right, including the possibility of a weighted vote. There is, there are a couple of examples, but here in Arizona, the Valley Metro is a weighted vote. And there's always peace in the region, peace in the family because that particular weighted vote is not used often. But it's always there if it's needed. And so I I believe that, Mr. Manager, we need to make sure that we are writing that memo to to the RTA just to express the input from from my colleagues and I on the council. There is one particular piece that we're not gonna be able to have the opportunity to speak as much about, which is the Prop one oh one funding, Prop one oh one funding ends twenty twenty two. I believe that we should bring back this conversation January fifth, Mr. Manager, so that we can have a much more thorough conversation and give us time to talk about retention and recruitment. But before we move on to retention and recruitment, Mr. Councilmember Durham, did you want to include anything on this RTA conversation?
Yes, I think that Move Tucson should should move Move Tucson forward.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember. So if you are all fine with moving the Prop one oh one conversation to January fifth so that we can have much more time to have a thoughtful conversation on, is that okay?
Yes, I agree. We need to break way into that one.
Okay, let's do that then. And we're moving on to item four. Time has been set aside. We are in item four. We're gonna talk about retention and recruitment. And I want to particularly thank the city manager for making it really clear that we needed to have this conversation about retention and recruitment every time we sit down to budget. Pay and cost of living adjustments should not be an afterthought. We should be talking about it every single time we sit down. And I want to give credit to the city manager for for bringing that to the conversation and putting it putting forward the concept of a one percent and additional conversation about retention and recruitment. So with that, Mr. Manager, just wanted to give you the floor so that we can talk about it.
Sure, Mayor, thank you and thank you, Councilmembers, for giving me a little bit of time. And Mayor, I know we have that hard stop and and I would suggest that as a part of the January fifth conversation, we continue this one as well. Because I think that to give it justice really requires a kind of a an ongoing dialogue, if you will, with the council. So very simplistically, when Joyce and went over the numbers in the budget, there was a line item that I'll use the term she glossed over, not not purposely, but just didn't spend a lot of time on because we wanted to talk about it under this item. And that's the performance based adjustments. And so if you do the math on that simplistically, that's a three percent adjustment that we built in to the budget going forward. Now, the reason that that becomes important is because traditionally, I think what's happened, particularly after the recession, any kind of employee compensation was truly an afterthought. It was, is there anything left? And and we were scrambling just to budget or balance the budget. And so an opportunity for those conversations. But what happened is that because it was it was done after the fact and we did a lot of one time things that that were totally appropriate and good. We fell behind on the market side of things. And so we made a lot of progress over the last several years to push and and get things to where they needed to go. But unfortunately, without having a sustained funding formula or or philosophy, it's a one and done. And so what I've suggested is that and what I am suggesting is that we think about that as part of the budget going forward. Now, the key word here is performance based. We don't have a performance based system today. I'm very excited that one of our departments, our police department is working on that. I was given a briefing on that last week. I'm, I think it's it's excellent and quite frankly, will not only set the stage for our organization and a lot of the other departments, but I think it will lead the country, is my opinion. So I I'll be presenting that to you very, very short order. I think there's an opportunity to drive behavior, if you will, from a performance standpoint, based on the priorities of the mayor and council, which then translates into the community. So as the community is is giving you feedback, you then give that to us. We put those into the metrics that are appropriate and we drive behavior from a customer service standpoint. That's the goal, kind of simplistically, and I won't get into any other detail for that right this second. However, taking a step back, the fact that we have these discussions upfront and we put pots of dollars out there that we earmark that are built into the conversations, they become just as important as any other piece of the budget is is extremely important, not only for the fact that the existing employees understand that that there's some opportunity for them to see some adjustments, but it helps me in recruitment. The recruitment piece of this is extremely difficult and even in this environment, right? You'd think that it would be really simple. It is not that simple. You know, one of the pieces that will be important is what's the growth potential? Sure, if I come over and I and I help you with this, what's the, I'll use the term guarantee. There are no guarantees in life and I understand we have to be flexible, but there has to be at least a path forward. We have some projects, if you will, in the works where we have, you know, employee based pay or skill based pay, et cetera. Those are awesome, but it's a very, very small percentage of our workforce as a whole. So Mayor, I I don't want to say anymore on that. At this point, what I would suggest is that you schedule, if you if you're up for it, schedule some time to have this discussion more detail on January fifth. In the meantime, if the council could give me some feedback on that, I'll present to you a little more detail on some of these things that we're thinking, how we can address those going forward. Because I I do believe that that the performance based piece is one that's important. Last thing, I said that was the last thing. Last thing, I wanted to make sure that I'm clear. There was no action taken on the one percent across the board. There was only on the fifteen dollars an hour, et cetera. I will bring that back to you in the future. You can bring that and and you can give me direction on that going forward. But that will be probably one of the last times. Just because I really want us to start shifting towards that performance space. That's all, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity and and I'll be ready on the fifth, if that's okay with you.
So just to reiterate, you're not expecting us to give you feedback or direction on the one percent or whatever cost of living adjustment Mayor and council feels we need to take a step towards today?
No, Mayor, I don't need that right this minute. What I do need is for you all to be thinking about it. Because I wanted to do it in the context of a bigger conversation regarding performance based pay and recruitment and retention. It was, it should not just be a one off. It should be.
Right. So we have an idea of one percent, what it would cost for all of our employees, except those that receive the fifteen dollar minimum wage decompression. Councilmember Feumbrus?
Yeah, I was gonna say that's the one percent is for the adjustment of people that the example Joyce said was somebody that's making fourteen eighty and moving them up to meet the compression there. Is that correct? That's what I thought it was.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Feumbrus, so the the simplistically, there's the fifteen dollars an hour, the resulting compression, which is addressed. And within those folks that are addressed, a minimum of one percent.
Okay.
It was not one percent across the board for all.
Okay, no, no. And Mike, Mike, if I'm hearing you correctly, in January, you're gonna bring back issues and talk about a pay performance type of program?
Yes, on January fifth, if you will give me the opportunity.
And I know we've had discussions about public safety, the firemen, the police officers, the dispatchers and all those. You you're talking about that too. And then I hear you saying the TPD is already working on something, a program like that?
Mayor, Councilmember Feumbrus, TPD is actually way ahead of the curve on a performance based plan. Working with the labor group to develop something that drives the priorities that have been established by council so that, again, it's it's a metric based, it's it's objective. And it gives employees an opportunity to see a path for additional pay, but it also gives me an opportunity on the recruitment side to to let folks know that, hey, there is an opportunity at the city of Tucson to progress within the salary schedule.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any others? Alrighty, I do have a question. Does it make more sense to make a cost of living adjustment based on inflation rather than a blanket like one, one point five percent? Do we keep up with that? Is that like a yearly?
Mayor, it makes.
That we do?
Sure, it makes absolute sense, but I can't recommend that because we don't know what the what the inflation is going to be. So I have to have the discussion annually just to make sure that I can afford it. I mean, that that is a reality. We've got finite dollars. So although I'd love to tell you, hey, let's tie it to.
Inflation.
It I I wouldn't be able to recommend that because I don't know what that's gonna do in the future.
Okay, so you want to make sure that it's just more of a cost of living?
It's a delivery.
Certain percent.
Conversation annually and it'll be in that it'll be in that range, if you will, that we.
And that you want to move from a a certain percentage of cost of living to more of a performance pay?
Yes, ma'am, that's that's the ultimate goal.
Okay.
Keep in mind that I do see some interim steps. That's probably not until twenty three.
Okay.
But there's probably some interim steps in the end of twenty one and into twenty two that we can start moving in that direction. Like I say, I think we've got one department that's way ahead of us in terms of already putting some of those pieces together.
Any further questions from my colleagues? Alrighty. I think that it would be appropriate to bring this particular item back. So both Prop one oh one and retention and recruitment conversation for January fifth, Mr. Clerk, so that we can add those items to the agenda, have more time to discuss. I do want to offer the opportunity for my colleagues to you know, if you want to add anything else to this conversation, you have an open floor.
Madam Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I think I just wanted to ensure that the executive director for PEP sent in a booklet for their anniversary that they sent in to each one of the councils and he wanted to thank everybody that's helped them. And they do a lot for the homeless right now and most needy, most vulnerable citizens. Providing programs, a lot of times in Yuma, they're all over the state. And he has a booklet for celebrating their anniversary that was presented and I sent it to each of the wards. So I hope you receive it. The other thing I want to wish is everybody a safe and happy, Merry Christmas. I don't say happy holidays, I say Merry Christmas.
Feliz Navidad, that's what I say.
God bless you all. Stay safe, stay healthy and wear your mask.
Stay healthy, please. Stay healthy, all of you. Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Yes, Your Honor.
Leader, Ramon Gonzalez passed away last night. He was the leader of Thirty First Street Project that did years. He passed away because of COVID, so keep him in your prayers. Thank you.
Oh, no.
Ramon.
Poor family. Well, colleagues, I will call this meeting adjourned. We do see each other back on the fifth of January for a regular study session. I wish you all happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Feliz Navidad and a happy and healthy and safe New Year. Thank you all so much for your hard work this year.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Much appreciated. Thank you all and my regards to your families.
Bye, everyone.
Take care. Thank you.